For I'd like to call the plumbing board to order, December thirteenth, November eighth, November twenty-ninth, and December sixth. I'd like to start with a call to order. I'll start by John.
My game.
Greg Coop.
John Ditterman.
Roger Warren.
Rich Kamau.
Tad Lythwaite, planner.
And Burgess, planning director.
This evening, we're going to go through the approval of minutes, October eleventh, November eighth, November twenty-ninth, and December sixth. We'll look at pending applications, Bentley's campground expansion, item three, land use ordinance provisions on retail operations, one, two downtown business district one, and shown as item four, but item three downtown business district two. We'll then get a planner's report, open it up for public comment. After the approval of minutes this evening, I will be excusing myself because of help issues and Roger will be taking over, but Roger, they have a majority of members present in the prior meetings, it's necessary I say at least for this first portion. So we'll start with the approval of minutes for October eleventh, having Marty, myself, and Greg. So Marty or Greg if you have.
Move to accept the minutes for October eleventh, two thousand and twelve.
Second. I have a motion to accept, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. We have the majority of the board that was present that evening, with the other three abstaining individually, not here. November eighth, again Marty, Greg, and Rich.
And not myself.
So is it November eighth, minutes?
Second.
Have a motion to approve, second. All right, Greg, any further discussion? All in favor? We have the four that were present, all in favor, means to extension, that would be approved. The minutes of November twenty-ninth, Greg, John, myself, and Roger.
Move to accept the minutes for November twenty-ninth, two thousand and twelve.
Second.
Motion by Greg, a second by Roger. Any further discussion? All in favor? Actually, all, except for Rich. Minutes of December sixth, two thousand and twelve, all in favor, Marty, John, Roger, and Rich, so everyone here except for Ms. Copeland.
Move to accept.
Accept. Have a motion to approve or accept from Rich, second by Marty. Any further discussion? All in favor? No. Okay. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Roger, going to the pending applications, item one, Bentley's campground expansion. Raj, thank you, appreciate it. Board, I apologize. Thank you. Hope you feel better about it. Happy holidays.
Yeah, I think I'm deep.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Well, you too. Take it easy. Got it. Thanks.
First item on the agenda is the Bentley's campground expansion, additional use tag, you want to bring us up to speed? Do we want to do this, we have to do, we have to go through the whole thing?
From the beginning? No, we're not going through the.
Okay.
But I will give a, I will give a very quick summary. As you recall, there were just a few items that back in, I believe it was June, I think it was the latest date, there were several concerns the plumbing board had regarding this application. And one was, of course, the receipt of the DEP permits for the application. It was a blue site location, water's alteration, water quality permits from DEP, which had not been received at that time. There was also Marty's concern about the location of the emergency phone that's required. That had not been resolved. And the biggest issue, as you all recall, is that there was an outstanding violation on the property in that there was not a complete conformance with the March twenty-second, two thousand and six permit that had been granted to the original thirty-eight site campground in that in a butter, the terios could readily see the camp sites from their property. The applicant had many times attempted to remedy that situation, but because of geography, elevation, a number of other factors, it would take extraordinary measures in order to meet the requirements that were imposed in that two thousand and six approval. Therefore, the applicant on the staff and the planning board came up with a solution. That solution was that there would be compliance if the applicant could, in fact, block views of camp sites from the applicant's first floor and specifically their deck in the rear of the building.
The applicant's.
Excuse me, the butter's, thank you, the butter's property. And the applicant went out and basically had installed a fence and made some modifications to that fence. The, finally in November, at the end of November, the code enforcement officer and I joined with Mr. Light and Bruce from Bentley's and the terios and took a look at the improvements that Bentley's had made and confirmed that the camp sites with trailers on them are not visible from the rear of their, or rear of the building specifically the deck. Therefore, you have a letter from the code enforcement officer confirming that, in fact, that situation had been remedied and there was no more violation in that, the terios were now visually blocked from the camp sites on the property. Therefore, that being one big restriction that kept the planning board from moving forward, as you recall, that is a policy in our bylaws and a policy in the selectmen, that we cannot proceed with a, an application until any outstanding violations or nonconformities, remediable nonconformities are correct on that site. Those have been corrected, code enforcement officer attest to that, and now we can move forward with the final disposition of this application.
Okay, that being the case, is it a matter of just reading off the findings and facts?
Well, perhaps to give Rick an opportunity to, to address those, those two or three items that were discussed. You also may want to talk about the temporary or the provisional use of the, of the existing leach field. So we'll do that. So we'll give Rick a chance to present that. Because you really haven't had a presentation since June. You got the letter in August, and Rick sent your letter, but probably for your own, I don't know that.
I suspect he says that.
Yeah.
Stand in front of me here. Thank you, Mr. Chair, from the board, Rick Light, light by my design, and Bruce is also here, might present that way. When we left the last meeting, it's been a long road, and we're very thankful to be here tonight, that we've got the screening issue resolved. And as far as the planning board conditions that we last left, there were two items that the board had asked for specifically, and we made a submission of, that long ago, hard to believe, August tenth. And since that time, as Tad mentioned, we have received the DEP permits and sent those to town. And there were two small items that were requested on the plan on phase one. And one was that we, the emergency phone line, which Marty will recall, requested, we talked about, and we put the note on the, a note on the plan, note two, and showed the location of the line to the office building, so that the phone line would be, it's a hard, it'd be a hardwired line. Bentley has met with public safety, we'll talk about that, and put a note on the plan that that phone's to be installed in this location here and it'd be visible, it's going to be installed in a very visible location, so people drive by. Part of the thinking was, and we discussed this at one of the meetings, it sort of reinforces, you're driving somewhere, coming and going all the time, you see it, it's not up back, you recognize that if you had to use it. The second item, of the two items that were requested was, we'd actually requested, was at the time, you recall that we, we made a request to the DHS, Department of Environmental Services, in terms of septic capacity, that Albert Frick Associates, they were going to study the existing, and study the existing flows for the existing system at the existing campground, and determine if there's sufficient capacity in the campground to, so that this, should the case be with data, that this had, that this existing system has the capacity, we would not need to build this system. We don't know that that's the case, and, but we requested that we put a note on the plan, which we put note eight on drawing C-102, that says, and I'll read the note, "For wastewater disposal, as a condition of the town of Arundel, conditional use approval for Bentley's campground expansion phase one, existing wastewater flows from the existing thirty-eight site campground, the existing campground, are being monitored for the two thousand and twelve camping season and will be submitted to the main department of human services for evaluation. Should the existing wastewater disposal system for the existing campground be determined by DHS to have sufficient unused capacity to accept the designed flows from the fifteen site phase one expansion, the phase one proposed leach field D, which is the lead field, shall not be required to be installed and wastewater flows from the phase one sites will be pumped to the existing campground wastewater system. Leach fields D and E locations shall remain as potential reserve systems to be required." So what we're saying is if there's capacity and DHS approves, we wouldn't need to build these, otherwise, the system is here, it's been designed, it would be built, the board is comfortable with. As I recall, those are the two outstanding items, we have the DEP permits, I think we've, those are, that was all that was left, but if there are any other items or questions from the board, I'd be happy to answer those.
I just have a question on that wastewater. Have you already internally determined that the capacity for that system is there, you just need an approval from DHS?
Albert Frick did the capacity analysis, and Bruce and the folks at the Bentley's took some flows. I'll be honest with you, at this point, you've submitted the data, I don't know if there's going to be the capacity, but I, there was more flow to that system than we anticipated, based on, they monitored the flows, but, well, they will leave the note on the plan, but I suspect that we're going to be building that system, I think, at this point, honestly, would be my best guess. Do you have a question?
Any comments? How is the, that phone identified? Is it at the office, or how are we?
It's going to be at the office, as you first come in, up to the hill.
Okay.
It's going to be the, you know, it's right next to the camp sites. Actually, the wires and all that are all been run. Fairpoint's going to come in March before we open and terminate it, so it's going to have a big nine-one-one urgency. It's going to be in a plastic house that we ordered, so, I mean, they can get to us, but it's all going to be enclosed.
Excuse me, Bruce, could you identify yourself for the camera?
Bruce Garrigan, Bentley's.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question or comments? Okay. I guess we can move to the findings and facts?
Yes, we can. One thing, Mr. Chairman, as you may recall, changes made by this board in your, in your bylaws and subsequent changes to the ordinance, which has not, of course, gone to town meeting yet, require that inconformance with MMA recommendations that you all have learned from your exciting classes in land use law and procedures, require that the criteria for approval all be voted on individually, each criteria of approval must be voted on individually. This is no different, no different than what the zoning board keels does when they're considering a variance, they have four criteria, each criteria must be voted on. If there is a predominant nay on any of, any of the criteria where the applicant is found to meet, not meet, fail to meet one of the criteria, then a motion for approval. So you will note in your findings and fact, a yea and a, checkoff list, and you will have to vote on each one of those for your procedures. So I guess we should be prepared to do that. Whether you want to do that now, but I guess we should just proceed through the entire reading and then, and then vote as we count each one of these criteria. Okay. Okay, that's what we made. Okay, I'm in that. Well, we can share. No, it's okay, you have to vote between a given chance or a particular. Right now? Okay? You got the findings and fact on one page, and the following is the conditional use criteria. So we're going to go through the second page of the board? Well, I thought we'd just go through the whole process. Okay. Okay? Because the findings and facts still have to be established. Right. Just to be clear, are you going to read all the findings and facts first before we go over? Yeah, that's what I was asking. Yeah. Read all the findings and facts before we go over the conditions and approval. Okay, findings and facts, motion for approval, conditional use permit for phase one expansion of Bentley's campground, whereas, on March nineteenth, two thousand and twelve, the local planning board received a conditional use application for BW Campground Realty LLC, a conditional use application, to develop fifteen new recreational vehicle sites in Bentley's campground with sewer water, electrical hookups on two point six, three acres of property located, located on property identified as tax map thirty, lot twenty-four, in the HC, CCS, and R-two districts, whereas, part of the conditional use application, the applicant has made submission to the main department of environmental protection for stormwater permit, site location permit, for the full volume of lot twenty-four to a maximum of one fifty-five additional RV sites, in addition to the existing thirty-eight sites, and an application of help in human engineering for a commercial onsite sewage disposal system. Whereas, on April twelfth, two thousand and twelve, the local planning board conducted a public site walk on the proposed project site, whereas, on May tenth, two thousand and twelve, the local planning board conducted a public hearing on the proposed project. Whereas, on May twenty-third, two thousand and twelve, code enforcement officer notified the planning board that the applicant had failed to block use of camp sites from the adjacent terio property as maintained, as mandated by the conditional use permit issued for Bentley's campground on March twenty-second, two thousand and six. Thereupon, the planning board informed the applicant that the board would not act on defending the application until such term, the code enforcement officer notified the board that the applicant was in compliance with the screen for additions of the two thousand and six approval, and the main department of environmental protection issued all relevant permits. Whereas, on October eleventh, two thousand and twelve, the department, main department of environmental protection issued Bentley's campground a site location permit, an NPA wetlands alteration permit, and water quality certification permit for both the phase one proposal and the additional hundred and forty future recreational vehicle sites. Whereas, on November thirtieth, two thousand and twelve, the code enforcement officer notified the planning board that the applicant has erected additional fencing on the property line and effectively blocks views of all camp sites on Bentley's campground from the rear deck of the terio residence located at two fifty-two Law Cabin Road, tax map thirty, lot twenty-four. Whereupon, the local planning board has arrived at the following findings, using the findings and facts, one, the owner of the property is BW Campground Realty, the applicant is, two, the applicant is Bentley W. Warren, the third, three, the property is located at twenty-four Bentley's Way, as in some of the tax maps, is map thirty, lot twenty-four, four, the property is a property of forty-six point two-eight acres in size with access from Port Huron Road via fifty-foot right-of-way called Bentley's Way, located within the R-two, CCS, and HC districts. That portion of the parcel being proposed for development consists of two point six feet acres of property located in the southeast of the quadrant of the property, and is situated exclusively in the HC and CCS districts. Five, current campground currently existing in the northern boundary, the property was approved in, on March, approved on March twenty-second, two thousand and six, will provide thirty-eight recreational vehicle pad sites serviced by on-site sewer, electrical water hookups, as well as restroom facility, pop house, pool, parking areas. Six, the applicant proposes a development expansion referred to as phase one, consisting of fifteen recreational vehicle sites in the southwest portion of the property within the CCS and HC's only district. Seven, sites will be serviced by water, sewer, electric hookups, and pedestrian, pedestrian, excuse me, no pedestrians, pedestals, rides, located on each site, where there will be no tenting or permanent sites located in phase one, although tents may be permitted to occupy designated recreational vehicle sites. Eight, sites will be accessed from the main access drive of the existing campground by twenty-five, twenty-four foot wide access road, and sites will be accessed by a one thousand fifty linear foot, eighteen foot wide, with one loop, one grade loop driveway. Nine, site pedestals will also provide electric cable, television services for connections within, with existing services in the campground. Ten, the applicant received traffic movement permit from the main department transportation data, March fourteenth, two thousand and eleven, for land traffic out of existing campground road, patrons of existing saloon, the existing thirty-eight site campground, and additional two hundred and eighty RV sites in the remainder of the applicant's unit. Eleven, the applicant has received the site location permit, wetlands alteration permit, water quality permit for the proposed phase one development disputes, as well as for future expansion in the remainder of the applicant's name, that portion. Twelve, the extensions shall be served by private home, like on-site well and storage tank, while septic from each of the proposed sites will be collected via tunnel, sewer collecting system, and discharge in a covered, ten million gallon septic tanks. The applicant has received permits to install two leach, leachable disposal fields within the phase one site, however, the applicant has also received provisional permit from the main department of human services to use the existing common leach field in the existing campground use due to its excess capacity. Thirteen, the fire department has determined the existing fire suppression systems located on the water septician to provide water suppression, fire suppression, water supply for the proposed activity, however, in any future expansion campground will inevitably be installation of water supply on and dry hydrant. Fourteen, the applicant will install emergency phone line located on the west side of the existing registration building. Fifteen, no additional lines proposed to the phase one area. Sixteen, the applicant has installed additional fencing, buffering between the property at two fifty-two Law Cabin Road, has provided sufficient evidence that camp sites in the proposed phase one expansion will not be visible from adjacent residential properties. Conformance with conditional use criteria, after due review and consideration, the local Arundel planning board has determined the application being performance of the criteria of section seven, nine seven H of the Arundel land use ordinance as follows. Nine seven H one, the uses compatible with and similar to the general categories of uses in neighboring properties, campgrounds are fully conditional uses, both in the HC and the CCS district, the proposed expansion of lots of existing campground at the south and automobile dealership to north, and open space to east, is comparable with and similar to the general categories of uses in neighboring properties.
I was a little, Mr. Chairman, may I speak before the floor is taken? I was not present for most of the discussions by the board regarding Bentley's campgrounds, but I have, over the last week, asked the planning board to forward me enough documentation that I feel that my vote is still fair.
Be casted with some authority in matter. I just wanted to go on directly to say that. Can we commit that? Yeah? It is permissible. It is permissible. It's really up to the board. It's up to the board. Have you guys, anybody have a comment on that?
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have a problem with it.
Rick feels he's up to speed?
Yep, that's fine. All in favor?
I have what?
Of nine seven H.
Okay, I thought we were talking about.
I thought we were. No, I, that didn't have to go to a vote, did it? Well, it just did.
And I didn't vote.
Okay. That being the case, how do we look at nine seven H one? All in favor?
We have to have a motion to accept.
That's what I'm asking. Okay. Motion's made, we need a second. Motion made, a second by Rich.
Yes, Roger.
Do we want to put another A's in here?
It has to be.
Are you doing it?
Yes, she's doing it.
All in favor?
Yay. Okay, nine seven H two, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the anticipated future development of neighborhood in that Bentley's campground is a proposed use in the CCS and HC district, has been found to be consistent both with the cops remains planned and potential future use in the area.
Would we accept?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Discussion. This is done, but.
Nine seven H three, if there is adequate and safe pedestrian and vehicular access to and, to and into the site to accommodate anticipated traffic to and from the use. The proposed access, loop road, the proposed access and loop road are of sufficient design and size to provide safe pedestrian and vehicular traffic to share the same access corridor within the phase one area. The applicant has received a traffic movement permit from MDOT for vehicular traffic egressing and egressing the main campground driveway far in excess of the trips generated by the phase one expansion. Move to accept nine seven H three.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, we just have to say that the board has looked at this rather closely, and we analyzed this, so we're very well versed on the traffic.
That being the case, all in favor?
Yay.
Those opposed? One? Nine seven H four, that there's adequate water supply and sewage disposal available to services of use, solid waste, the applicant is existing eight yard dumpster collecting, collection point at the main campground that will serve phase one, and has an existing contract with Oceanside Rubbish, Wells Main, disposals on the ways with Inco Main and Portland and other facilities in New Hampshire. On-site septic system, the applicant has received permit from the, from the, help from human engineering to install an on-site septic system to accommodate the patron load of fifteen additional RV sites in phase one, and has provisional permission to use the excess capacity in existing campgrounds wastewater treatment facility. Water supply, the applicant will be using existing on-site well for groundwater and their passing volume to serve the proposed fifteen additional sites. Move to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Any other discussion?
Just a quick comment, I would ask the board, if you don't already have any conditions, that you put a condition on that, that the findings we submitted to the planning board were done? Like the human services findings that he's going to submit, so that your guy has a record down the road whether it's acceptable or not? Who's in the board?
I'm wondering though, if, if, if H H E doesn't provide permission, then they can't use it anyway, doesn't even have, doesn't even come to the table?
Well, I mean, yeah, the plumbing inspector would be very interested in it.
Yeah, it does come to.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll know, I mean, we can make that provision.
Through the chair, if I could, I would agree, that, that goes back to one of the other comments I'll make later when you're done, but they put a note that says some provision, like some provisional item, we're happy with that. If we get the letter, we'll provide it to the code officer, if we don't get it, then we're, we go as the plan shows, so any sort of condition, we're comfortable with that.
In other words, it's covered on two bases, we have two, we actually have one septic field, we have a reserved septic field, and we have the additional, the excess capacity in existing camp. So I think, I think the applicant has more than adequate improvement, they have adequate space on that. If you recall, we, we went through a lot of effort on that issue. They have more than enough space, they actually have back, they have two back, they have one backup, and a reserve field, so.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
If we're going to require it, we need to amend that finding the fact, why we had a motion on the floor.
We can, we can add that at the end.
Okay.
Conditions.
Okay. That was my point, have it with the conditions. Oh, I thought you were saying we should add it in here and amend that condition. Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
All opposed?
Nine.
Nine seven H five, if there will be no noise, dust, odor, vibration, smoke generated by these that will adversely affect neighboring properties in that noise, phase one sites or located adjacent commercial properties, and open space owned by the applicant, noise generated by campus, will have, will not have an official impact on local residential neighborhoods. Dust, and when sources of dust anticipated will be dust raised by vehicles in the access of loop road, giving horizontal and vertical winding driveway, vehicle speeds will be very well absorbed, resulting in no official dust impacts generated by the phase one expansion, odor. Issues will not generate any odor issues, vibration, smoke, fire pits are proposed to be installed in each of the fifteen sites producing some campfire smoke during summertime operations, blocking the smoke generated, not appreciably impact air quality in the neighborhood.
Motion? Yeah, who's going to accept?
Second. Second. Any discussion?
I do have a question. I do have a question. Noise, as we all know, is a sensitive issue, and I'm just wondering, because there are two parts to that issue, it's noise at the site and it's away from the site regarding here at the site. Add to your knowledge, have there been any complaints on noise registered from the site itself?
Well, I have not received, I, the code enforcement officer is not, he doesn't provide me with any complaints.
To your knowledge?
To my knowledge, no, there's been no formal complaints. What other people have complained, I can't say, but there, to my knowledge, there are, have been no formal complaints filed with the code enforcement office.
Maybe Bruce, you can speak to that?
Yeah, I actually talked to Jim the day we were there, and he said that he had no complaints. And we, we had a band one night, Bentley personally went to some of the neighbors, and they were contempt of everything. So, to my best knowledge, no.
I'm bringing it up because it is such a sensitive issue.
And I know the sheriff, I met with the new sheriff, Troy yesterday, he's the new deputy sheriff of the area, and he said that Mo and them had no complaints.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Nine seven H six, if this appears to the site, including location, slope drainage, slopes, soils drainage and vegetated cover are suitable for the proposed use. The applicant has received the M D E P stormwater permit and consider this stormwater control facilities will be installed on the site with its redevelopment law and will protect from several issues which is just.
Motion?
Who would accept?
Second.
Any discussion? Anyone, all in favor?
Yeah.
Nine seven H seven, that the use will not constitute a public or private nuisance. Proposed activity and the limited scale of the proposed activity will not constitute private nuisance and will not pose an impact or nuisance on law enforcement and emergency medical services.
Who would motion?
Who would accept?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
Nine seven H eight, that all the requirements and applicable provisions of this ordinance, particularly any current management performance standards are met. The applicant has complied with all of the pertinent provisions of the Urundale Land Use Ordinance.
Motion, please.
Move to the seven, nine seven H eight.
Seven. All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
Therefore, be it resolved, and based upon the above findings and conclusions of the Urundale Planning Board, hereby approves the conditional use application of V W Campground Realty LLC, developing fifteen new recreational vehicle sites in campus campground, providing sewer, water, electrical services on a two point six three acre park of property, opening of the property identified as tax map thirty, lot twenty-four, in the H C, C C S and R two districts, subject to the following conditions. The applicant shall submit a revised plan to the board showing the location of the amended stormwater buffers mandated by the D M D E P in its departmental order of October ninth, two thousand and twelve, and shall supply a copy of the mandated deed restrictions as filed in the York County Registry of Deeds. Two, the applicant shall install all soil erosion control devices prior to the start of excavation, and shall maintain said devices throughout the construction, instruction shown through the construct table. Three, the applicant may use the temporary access road located to the east of phase one only for construction purposes of phase one. Upon completion of phase one, the applicant shall block or gate vehicle access to this road from phase one and shall immediately lower the grass surface of this temporary road. Four, all existing vegetated buffers, fences and earth berms shall be maintained good working or both the original campground and the approved phase one section. Five, no additional vegetation, especially that vital to providing visual buffering from adjacent properties shall be cleared beyond the limits to any and on any approved plans. Six, the applicant's engineers shall provide an asphalt of completed improvements and provide a stamp certification that all improvements have been completed in accordance with approved plans before the code enforcement officer issues certificate of occupancy for phase one. So approved by the Urundale Planning Board this thirteenth day of December two thousand and twelve.
I thought we got ahead of that.
That's why you guys.
Okay, section second.
Second.
You need to say that upon, upon receipt of the letter stating from, stating either acceptance or rejection by Health and Human Services that that letter is, a copy of that letter is voted to the town planner for addition to the file. That will, will not, it got accepted or it didn't get accepted.
Right. Did you get that?
Having that, I am concerned, how does the board feel about this? Any discussion? Any motion?
Yeah, move to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Do you have thirty days to appeal?
We have voted yet, I think, yeah, okay. Mr. Chair, if I could, I have a couple of questions or clarifications, at least I might perhaps, if I could.
And the findings, finding of fact number seven, we have, it says, slightly serviced
by water sewer and electrical hookups and pedestal risers located in the site, there will be no tent in the primitive sites located in phase one, although tents are permitted throughout the fire and designated RV site. We had talked about, requested, and I want to see the board so comfortable with this, that next spring, when we're starting construction after we get permits and they're going to start clearing and stakeout once the ground freezes, that next spring, there be recognition of an opportunity that if they're ready, if they're, if they're not ready for occupancy with all the sewer and the water and all the hookups, that if they're in construction, they'd be able to use those sites for tent sites temporarily, subject to Jim Nagel authorizing that. Could we just, I'd like to have that somewhere in writing that that's authorized, though, on a temporary basis?
Well, I think this is on a permanent basis. Basically, if you can't, it's basically say, if you can't get an RV site, if you don't have an RV in there, you want to put a tent in there, put a tent in there.
So we're, you're, if you don't understand, we're okay with that, okay, subject to Jim saying that.
Actually, that's a little beyond what you asked.
Okay, okay. I'm fine with that. And then the second one, I'm finding, actually, there was a type line, you might have picked up on that, although tents are permitted, it says M A R.
Yeah, change it to tents K B permitted. Yeah. No, it's K, it should be R. Yeah, maybe.
Maybe, maybe, yeah, okay, may be permitted. And then under finding twelve, I would suggest, fourth line down, it says, however, the applicant has received provisional approval, two, applicant has requested provisional approval.
Good point.
We may have received the letter recently, but I am not aware of it, so that way we're covered.
I have a question for the chair. We were going to take a vote on the end here, and since we took a vote on each of the individual items, it's the sum of the items that, it's because we passed each of the items that this passes, not because we take another vote at the end. So a vote at the end isn't necessary.
No, I think it is.
We need to take a vote for the additional condition.
Right, that's what I think.
Yep, but because we met, we voted on each one of these individuals, we don't take a vote on the thing as a whole, do we?
Yeah, and I'll tell you why, because you can meet all those criteria, and the plan would still be mine. Will be in part, but it will still be mine.
It's my understanding that the vote at the end confirms the resolutions at the end and also the findings.
Right, right, and it also confirms the, the conditions.
Yeah, I think.
Okay, now, the other question I have, do we have to reopen for a vote on the fact that we, like Rick mentioned, however, the applicant has received, it's been requested, we need to change that?
I don't think it, we didn't vote on that item itself, we only voted on the condition of use. So I, I'm not sure that we need to actually have a vote that shows that it's on the record that we changed from received to requested, and that's what we would be voting on, is acceptance of the entire, for the entire motion, so I'm not sure if we actually need to do it or not.
To be honest, it's clarification, I mean, the applicant has provided more than adequate onsite separate. If D H S decides they're going to, we have the use of excess capacity terrific, but if they don't, there's a fallback position they have.
Site A D, I believe it is.
And then they have a reserve field, so they have two fields. That's it.
Mr. Chair, if I might, one other question, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, administratively. Ted, the owner's name, are you certain about that? V W Campground Realty LLC?
That's what he gave me for the application.
Okay, I just wanted, if we had, the deed is, is administratively, Bentley, Bentley's Campground Realty, I don't know, I just wanted to be clear, long as he gave that to you.
That's what he gave us, thank you. It may have changed, but.
Mr. Chairman, I agree we accept the findings of fact, the motion for the.
Second. All in favor?
Yeah.
Thanks, guys. Just means I stay here longer.
Thank you, thank you very much. I, I think Scott Bentley is pretty excited, and they're going to start with the ground freezes, they're going to get Andy out there to start, clearly, you know, start the fire.
Oh, it's all done?
No. And I do encourage the board to.
For the frusks.
For the frusks, yeah. It's two, if you ever out there, look at the fencing, it's, it's magnifico, it's two hundred and sixty feet long, and it's, it's, it's pretty amazing.
Pretty impressive. Okay, having resolved item one, I'd like to pursue and go after item three, land use source workshop. I think Taj provided us with a clean-up version of the farm retail, should we go over it quickly?
Yes, we could.
Yeah.
So we can get this thing behind us.
That would be a great thing.
Okay.
Those of you who don't know, it goes in section eleven, that's why it's eleven six ten. If you look at your, if you look at your table contents, it's in this eleven six ten. Section eleven is where all of the specific conditional use specifications for specific uses will be included in the new one. Per your, your request last week, you asked me to, A, expand space in both standards so the applicant, in that, put the application, put between pages, Richard asked for that. So the front setbacks, side setback and rear setbacks for structures in the four districts is included toward the benefit of anybody who's working on this. Those are the existing setbacks. We may change those as we go through this, but those are existing setbacks as of two thousand and twelve. Same thing with lot coverage, those are the same lot coverages that we have right now. Okay, so from that standpoint, they are currently, we have thirty percent lot coverage, R two, all the way to R four is twenty percent. So, I put that in, requirements that you, you asked on the residency requirement, we deleted single family, we just put residential dwelling unit for your request, origin of principal product, we eliminated fifty percent volume, and just got rid of the quantitative amount, so basically says that the principal product sold on the farm retail must be owned in the site. Sale of product from on, off-site farm land and aquaculture ponds, shall be permitted provided these lands are also owned in this, but at least by the name of the farm material. And the issue about wild caught fish and game, that qualifies as a, special uses, you'll see that in special uses, we eliminated the specific reference to wool and hair products from animals and made it more generalized, so that the, you see that the strikeouts are what we deleted and the underlines are what were added, and actually, this was what the board decided last week. The planning board may permit farm retailers to sell their goods, even if these goods are not composed of exact materials and quantity is produced by the farming operation. The applicant shall provide, the planning board, with empirical information necessary to verify that the farm retail, farm retailer is actively engaged in or will be engaged in producing the raw material before the finished goods being sold. Moving on to driveway accesses, basically going down the driveway surface, maybe amendments that you requested regarding trip generation, basically, if more than a hundred vehicle trips per day are generated, then the driveway surface shall be paved with two inches of Betwist concrete in accordance with section five four two four C three of the Urundale Land Use Ordinance. This is our standard, current standard, requiring that all parking, all gear in the parking lots, certain generating trip, trip generation have to be paid. Parking number seven, automobile parking spaces defined, or we define it as automobile parking spaces, reduce the square footage for retail space down, down to what it is across the board in Urundale instead of making special provision for farm retail, so it's two hundred and fifty square feet of retail space, no more than ten parking spaces for two hundred and fifty square feet of retail space. Let's see, so we have a minimum and a maximum of parking spaces. Design, parking design, again, the hundred vehicle trip, trigger is in there, pavement. Parking location, this is where we were stumbling around in parking location. The idea was that trying to maintain the idea that this is a retail, and this is retail, but it is still a residential district or in a farm district, and that the parking spaces should not dominate the landscape in front of the place. So you would come up with a number of spaces that you wanted, a maximum number in front of the facility, in the front yard of the facility. So it's based on the districts, and it goes progressively. For R one and R two, for R one, it's ten spaces in front, for R two, it's twenty maximum spaces in front. And R three, and R four, it's thirty spaces in front, so that's fifteen spaces in the double-loaded parking lot. Anything older than that's got to be on the side of the road. So that's actually a, that's a fairly generous amount of space, especially if your farm retail is, let's say, selling pork, if you use the coruna example, usually that's about, at the maximum, about ten. So we, we're allowing a lot of parking spaces in front. Buffering and screening, as, this is the one where we were really tripping over ourselves, we didn't like the generalization, we wanted to deal with distance. And consequently, the intent here was to try to identify that linked screening essentially to the proximity of other residential structure, adjacent structures, not to just require a screening if you're in a residential farm land area and you're by yourself and that you have to automatically do a screening. It's really linked to existing other single-family buildings. So it's, it's an aggressive slide in the scale, and it's based on John's favorite, which is percentage of blockage. And it's, it's based on the distance between the parking lot or the, or the facility and the multiple area of the adjacent structure. So if it's less than fifty feet, which is actually an existing condition, because you can't be less than fifty feet, according to Arizona ordinance, in the, in the R one district, you go up to sixty percent.
The problem I have with this is that it says greater than fifty feet.
Oh.
It should, it should just say fifty feet or one hundred feet, because it says greater, greater than fifty feet.
No, it should be less than fifty, or less. Yeah, my mistake, yours is more than, or less.
And it's the same in the R three, R four, it says greater than a hundred feet.
Oh, down there.
Down there, I'm sorry.
Where are the R one and two?
Yeah, I know, I definitely pointed out to you, because you're going to have to correct it anyway.
This is, and you'll see it goes, look, it basically says every twenty-five feet. This is, and you'll see it goes, look, it basically says every 25 feet. It drops from every 25 feet of distance. And a 25 feet of distance in the R1 district is, you know, kind of a distance. When you get up to 100 feet or more from the adjacent, adjacent residential structure, then it's, you don't have to go to a case-by-case basis. And you can't come up with a general standard. And I would almost say that unless you can come up, I'm not sure how, how good these rules are as a hard and fast rule. What could be 75 feet may not, may be a good distance, but they're looking like in a living room. And it also doesn't take into account intervening topography or vegetation. And I think that's something we have to put in there, where the board has to examine. You have to say, if there is no other screening, either by vegetation or by topography, then these, these rules apply. But to say, just because I'm 50 feet away and I've got a hill in between, I saw it to be a screening, I don't think that's appropriate. Well, when you get more than 100 feet, I think it gets, gets pushing the point, do you guys have any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, a question. This, where I'm reading this, that is if the farm structure is in front, okay? What if the farm structure of the retail is behind the residence, okay? Does it still need to be screened? Because you want, you want parties to be able to see who's there, as we spoke before, both ways.
Well, actually, this is for the sides and rear, more than the front, because actually if you look at the numbers, if you look at the setbacks in the front yard, if you're talking about the property across the street, which is really, in many ways, what we're talking about, you add up the setback distances in order for owner to, in most cases.
I'm just throwing that out as a, as a question.
Because it's, I believe it's 50 feet or less than 100. Yeah, front setback is 50 feet, then you got a road, which is another 50 feet, and then you got 50 feet from the other property, so we're 150 feet from, from the building to building, so you're already in the discretionary part of the plan. So the front yard, this isn't really, this is only really affecting, in reality, this is only affecting side and rear.
Now, the distance between existing residences.
Yeah.
It's gotta be there.
If I own a house, and my business is in front, you have to screen it?
No, no, no.
R1's again.
That's, that's why I asked it.
See, upwards says R1 and R2.
It says adjacent property.
The living area of a residential structure on adjacent properties, not on the same property.
Okay, that's, because we had that discussion.
Yep, yep. We said adjacent.
Okay, that's, thank you.
I have a question for you. Just a clarification on percentages, so if we have a side property line that's 1,000 feet long, and you're at the 50-foot, you're saying that somebody's gonna go out there and actually measure and say, I can't, you know, I can only see 600 feet, if I see 41 feet, then that's rejected, or I... You've gotta explain that percentage, because that's, I think you get into trouble with that, or very subjective.
Well, the percentage is the amount of, of blockage, the amount of visual blockage on that stuff.
Right, so, so if I get a 1,000-feet-sized property line, 600 feet of it's gonna be blocked?
No, 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 no. It's...
Percentage of visual blockage at landscape screening installation.
That's the blockage of the, of the adjacent house in terms of what it can see for the retail operation, not the, not the entire length of the property.
I guess my point is, is this actually measurable?
Yes.
So explain to me how, I'm just playing it dumb.
Well, very easily, I mean, you can make, you can make a determination of how much void space, let's say a fence, a fence will be 100% blockage, correct? So that's 100%. Certain kinds of vegetation, certain types of vegetation have a certain amount of blockage. And I actually will give you a book, that Ken Mills, Dr. Ken Mills did up in Syracuse, on what building, what kind of, different kinds of vegetation at various growth levels will produce what kind of blockage, visual blockage, actually get it for solar businesses.
So if we have intermittent blockage?
Yeah.
Right? So where there is not blockage, somebody's gonna have to go out there and measure that blockage?
Well, no, I don't, I don't think, I don't think you're understanding it yet. If I look at, if I'm standing in the retail operation, or rather, if I'm standing in your house, I am looking at the retail operation, based on how, the distance between those properties, I have to block a certain percentage. It doesn't, it may not have to be 100, it doesn't matter if the property is 1,000 feet long, because the building's not at that end, the building is over here. So it's only from the resident over to the retail building that the blockage is...
So somebody's gonna measure that distance that can be seen versus the distance of the building itself?
Correct.
Yeah, it's gonna be from point source to point source, and it's gonna be a cone division, and actually, the closer you are to that point source, and you put those, put that, I mean, if you were to put three, three Austrian pines on a quarter of the building, let's say for instance, you could probably block the entire thing from the entire angle, because they're gonna be looking for point sources, and you're gonna have focal points, lines of vision, which you can put a blockage in, you can put those in, block the whole neighborhood with three pines.
Yeah, I can just, I, from, you know, from Jim's perspective, I wanna make this so we don't run into the same situation that we ran into at Bentley's, so that it's clear it's...
It's not me, Jim, it's gonna be this board.
Whoever, you know, I mean...
As Rick had to do with this application, he had to show ahead of time, using site this, site, basically sections, site sections, view share analysis, to show, just taking sections, whether or not, you know, where you can see this, this facility. And that's what we gave with Bentley's, actually, to stand out there and look. We had actually relative, narrow corner, for instance, on Ontario property, they could see probably several hundred feet, I mean, quite a few, they could see huge cone of vision, but they only had to put the fence at certain critical locations. So they went actually beyond that in some cases, but, you know, it's just, it's strategic blocking, it's really like what we did with Katz. In the case, the requirement was, we had to shield the whole parking lot from, from view from the street. And the, and, you know, and the attempt was, they said, well, we're gonna put urbanities all the way around this huge parking lot, it's gonna look like a moat, and it's gonna look like a castle. What we did is, we identified key locations where we put key vegetation, those key locations, and effectively achieved the blockage, achieved the screen. And in this case, we're not saying 100%, we're not saying you can't see it at all. And that's one thing that they had to deal with, they had, Bentley's had a situation where you couldn't see it period. 100% blockage, we're saying worst-case scenario, 60%.
I just wanna make sure that it's something that is easily measurable, because yeah, it's gonna pass the planning board, but down the road, it may become Jim, because somebody may complain, right? I mean, what happens if things change or...
Well, what I'll say is that it's the planning board's responsibility and the applicant's responsibility to demonstrate to the planning board they're achieving that. And the planning board approves the methodology that they're going to use to do that. If, if it doesn't work, you can't blame the applicant to come back and make more, make more changes.
No, the planning board's gotta make sure that the methodology... If a tree falls, a tree dies, and they don't replace it, it's gonna come upon the CEO to, if somebody complains, it's not no longer the planning board's involved in it anymore, they're done. So, you know, I mean, if the team, the planning board, we've had to come over now, we just don't wanna get in a situation where everybody's going back and forth, I agree, whether this meets 60% or 100, whatever it is. You guys have spent, you guys, these guys, and Jim have spent a whole lot of time trying to remedy the situation over there. We don't want this to happen.
Well, the alternative to this is blocking the whole thing, and I don't think that's what we're wanting.
No, not at all, no.
And in some cases, as we said, you know, it may not be a displeasurable view. And that's one of the problems, I mean, somebody puts up, for instance, Ham's facility, there's nothing, nothing displeasurable about her place right now. Or if we looked at people's farm, actually, a lot of people would like to see that view across the street or next to it. You know, nice beautiful barn, and they've got some parking there, I think a lot of people will find that, hey, that's exactly where I want to see it. But we have to provide some sort of, some sort of standard, because unless we make a design standard on what kind of buildings these farm retails have to be, and you make qualitative assessments, the planning board, oh, you're gonna have to do some screen, so they're not a nuisance to adjacent properties. And the, the theory here is, you get to a certain distance and, you know, come on, it's not, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a problem. You get, you get to a certain distance and it's, it's no longer occupying your view. We have, we're taking care of the scale, because we have maximum building size, so we don't have a scale issue, like we had, and I don't mean this negatively, but like we had with Katz, where we have a huge building, and that's visible throughout that whole valley, so we don't have that scale issue. Farther, you get away from these smaller structures, you're less, they're gonna dominate the view as you're looking at your building. And that's the theory, distance, less screening, closeness, more screening. It'll be perfect, probably not. The alternative is just to say, screen it and take your best shot. The planning board kind of follows whatever.
Are you got a question, John?
Well, I have a couple of questions. And I, I agree with Dan, and I brought this up before, that the percentage, to me, is not a workable way to do it. And for one thing, as Dan pointed out, in terms of what happens after, you know, years after the application's been approved, trees that don't even have to be cut down, they grow, there's no screening underneath, says nothing about maintaining the screening, I don't know that we, you know, we do put maintenance of the screening, that's a CEO problem again. The other thing about screening, if we're doing percentages, you know, we're all thinking of the ideal, and it seems like the board never concentrates on the, the other end of the spectrum. For instance, with the 50%, you can have a solid fence halfway and then nothing, that's 50%, and the board can't argue that it's not 50%. It doesn't achieve screening really, but it blocks 50% of the view. That's not what you wanna do. You want a nice sort of, you know, dispersed 50%, that kind of breaks up the view.
So how would you describe it? How would you describe it?
I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't put this in here, because I think it's, it's something that you can't enforce. Well, you could, yes, if we hired someone specifically to do that, with the instrumentation and all of that stuff, I, I don't think it's, it's something that we need to do. I think the board needs to look at screening and needs to be part of the consideration to be at the discretion of the board. In some cases, you may want, you know, no screening, like the places you mentioned. Other places, we might have some problems, you know, neighbors might be complaining that they don't wanna see it, and we can work with the applicant to provide the appropriate screening. I, I realize that that runs into a problem in terms of having no standards to work with, so when do you ask for 50, when do you ask for 100, when do you ask for 75? But I, I think that's more workable on a case-by-case basis than putting in an arbitrary number and trying to meet that somehow. The other point I have is that you have visual blockage at landscape screening installation, and I don't think you mean to say that, because I think you want total screening from point A to point B, not just at the landscape screening installation. I mean, what if you already have screening, you have a wooded area or whatever, you don't even have a landscape screening installation, you just have screening, and it's from point A to point B, it's just between the two locations.
Then it's longer necessary to do it.
So it's a total screening, whether you have a location, or whether you have several locations, or whether you have no location, but you have natural screen. Follow what I'm saying there? So you're saying that, you're assuming that they're putting in a landscape screening installation, the way this is written?
Yeah.
They may not, or they may be putting several up.
Yeah, but I, I'm saying, if the need arises, and you have the buffer, I'm saying you, you can put any combination you want to, but 50% of the view, that's a screening.
No, but that's not what you're saying, you're saying at the screening installation, so what if you have multiple screening installations?
At the time of installation, how about that?
One blocks 50%.
At the time, it says, at the time of installation. Yeah, dots.
At landscape screening installation, in the gray area there.
Yeah, but look at what it says up above. The following amount of visual blockage at the time of installation, based on distance between residents and the farm retail. This time of installation.
This is what I'm saying, okay? You've got point A, you've got point B. Screening installation here provides 25%. Screening installation here provides 25%. Neither one of them provides 50%, but together they do. That does not conform to what you're saying.
I don't understand what you just said.
I understand what he just said, but I'm not sure that I, that I, and I agree with what you're saying. The problem that I have with this is that it says that, that the percentage of visual blockage is at the landscape screening installation. I think it should be at the residence of the person looking back at first, not at where you put the landscaping in.
Wow, that's a big, you guys are reading way, way too... Okay, let's take that up, percentage of visual blockage at installation, at time of installation, exactly what was above, at time of installation.
Okay, well, then I...
How's that? As it says above.
Total, I think you may, it's better to put total, right? Percentage, total percentage of visual blockage.
Oh, percent, I got a point, I got a point, I got a point source, and I'm looking at another point source, how much of it can I say?
You've got, you've got a lot of point sources.
I'm only talking about a thousand square foot building.
Yeah, but you've got, that's not a point.
John is making...
You've got, you've got corners of the building, you've got centers, you've got a lot of points, so you've got a bunch of cones going there. So you've got a wide area of potential visual screening that you need to do, you don't have just point A and point B.
No, but, no, you don't, but I'm saying, we, we, in, in larger contexts, you have a residence, talking about the living area of the residence, let's say, okay? And you're talking about the facility. Those are, actually, that's a pretty small area, and both of those are pretty small areas. And when I call them point, they are, it's, it is a collection of points, as you say, right? But it's a relatively small area. And what I'm just trying to say is that when you put this in, at the time you put this in, to screen that, provide that screening between point, this point A and this point B, with its multitude of other little points, that when you install it, you only, the filtration, the visual penetration of that screening, you can see 50% through that. So in other words, it's saying that you don't have to put in a solid fence, you can do a combination, it really pushes for vegetation, but... Yeah, I'm, I'm, it's, it's allowing for growth, and it's basically saying that unlike what Bentley's had to do, which was achieve 100% at the time of installation, we're allowing for growth to occur, we're allowing for it to change over time, and assuming you pick the right species of vegetation, it's gonna, it's gonna grow and fill out in many ways. So you don't have to achieve 100% blockage, you can have some screening, and you can roll into 100% in some future day. And you're right, at some point, yeah, tree falls over, it dies, somebody pours chlorine on it, whatever, and, and the tree, the tree just takes it up, it just dies, and yeah, then, then that person would probably have to replace it.
I'm not sure that they would, because this talks about the visual blockage at the time of installation. When it's put in, you have to achieve this. The tree dies three years later, and you don't have your 50% blockage, I don't think that's a problem, honestly.
Well, if you have a solid...
At the, at the time of installation, you achieve the blockage.
If I put up a solid fence, and that's part of the requirement, and that fence falls down, won't I have to replace it?
Why? That's not, that's not what this, no, that's not what that says. That says at the time of installation, I can put up a fence, have 100% blockage, that fence can get knocked over in a winter storm, and I don't have to build it again, because when I did it, it was there.
How about this, we'll put it in, you have to maintain that structure.
Right, yeah.
And that's what we do with landscaping right now, if somebody asks to do landscape screening, you know, if, if, if something dies or a fence falls over, yeah, you're not in compliance with the permitting.
I, I agree, but I, I'm simply saying, you know...
The officers just gotta chase you down, but you're not in compliance.
If I'm on the other side and I wanted me to twit about it, I interpret this to say exactly what I just said. At the time I put it up, I met the requirement. Hey, it fell down, I don't have to replace it.
Okay, and what would you do to fix this?
What you just said, and you have to maintain it.
Because nowhere else in the ordinance did you say at the time of installation. You just say screening must be, you need screening. And then here this one, you're saying at the time of installation, you're leaving it open for the tree.
So we have to take out at the time of installation or we put in a maintenance requirement.
Take out the maintenance and that all goes away, okay?
Yeah.
So, I mean, what we're trying to do is, is avoid the 100% at the time, 100% from the get-go is what I'm trying to avoid.
Yeah.
Okay?
And, and I have no.
I'm trying to also say screen, there's a difference between screening and blockage though. Screening is, is a, is an art, it's kind of like an articulated fence. It means that the, you're not, you can see through it. I mean, most people's landscaping, I'm going to screen that, that guy's barn from my house. Well, you know, nine times out of 10, you can see through your, your pines, you can see through your road of dunes, whatever you're doing. You're seeing some of it, um, you can see through it. Our screening requirements require you to completely block it. And, you know, that's not a reasonable thing to do. I think it's a burden on property owners. So what I'm trying to do is come up with a way of providing screening as it's intended, saying I'm putting blockage some, I'm putting something between me and it where I can not see the full form. And I can grow into 100% if you want to, but I'm trying to take less of the burden, I'm trying to take some of the burden off of the, off of the provider and the applicant.
Oh, I, I think if you just take out at the time of installation, it does exact, it, it, it makes them maintain that visual barrier. You have to achieve the following amount of visual blockage based on the distance between the residences, you have to maintain.
So you guys want to get rid of the at the time of installation, so. Okay. Man, I can imagine.
Because that.
Like that or not, John?
No, no, that's okay, I'm, I'm trying to solve the other problem.
Which, which one?
Which is the percent. And, and I'm trying to come up with a better word than homogeneous, but that may be the word. And it has to be 50% homogeneously distributed. So that you got, you know, 50% everywhere and not 100% and 0%. But there may be a better, is there a better word?
Well, there's two things, John, I'm trying to think in the other direction. In, in the sentence, the paragraph above, we call it screening, but then in the shade area, we call it visual blockage.
Yeah.
Well, because they're two different things.
Percentage of visual blockage.
Visual, visual blockage is saying that you cannot see 50% of the, of the structure. You cannot see, you can, you've got a filter, it's like looking through, think of it, think of it as like a grayscreen. When we're doing, uh, when we're doing shaded on, oh, this blockage right here, I mean, this, this shaded portion of this table here. That's a tent around it because of copying, it's probably a 20%, that's 10%, that's a 10% screen. Which means I can see 90% through this, this, this right here. 50%, this will be much darker and I can see very little, you know, lettering starts falling apart. At 60%, I can't see the lettering and at 90%, of course, I can't see any of the lettering. And that's, that's what I'm talking about screening, think of it as a screen. Think of it as, as a screen on landscaping and whatever else you're using is allowing you to see through to the other property. 50% screen, 70% screen or a wall.
I, yeah, I'm kind of like Dan, I don't understand how that can be done, but you, you have explained that there's technology that would allow that visual blockage to be achieved on a percentage basis. Okay, well, I'm not smart enough to figure that out and I'm not going to try. I'm going to take your word for it.
Well, the alternative is just, is.
Is blocking off completely.
Is either to block it off completely or maybe completely at the discretion of the planning board. The doubt is, we've gone the other way. Where some planning boards will say, ah, forget about it. And then other ones will say, I want you to put in a wall, I want you to put a mountain, and I want you to put in landscape, and I want you to put in a barrier. A triple barrier of Norwood Pines.
Wow.
You know, that's.
Don't forget the part where.
Don't have to worry. Don't have to worry, the Roserwood Gold Soul started swimming all around the, uh, the Norwood Pines and you don't have a.
But, but that's, I, you know, that's up to the planning board and, and the, the hearings that they will do at the time. I, I, I feel, would feel much more comfortable because if, if you leave it like this, I mean, I could envision all kinds of things, even if we say homogeneously distributed blockage. Well, that still allows you to put up like a camo net. Do you want to accept that as, as screening? I mean, it would meet the ordinance, but.
Well, no, because it, it gives you only a combination of landscaping, wooden fencing, earth and wood, so.
That would be like fencing.
Well, that's what you got right now. So right now you can put up a camo fence because that's what you have right now. And you can put up a camo right now under those circumstances. If you can put it up under those circumstances, you can do it right now. That's the point. Now, if you want to make sure that it's only limited to those, and we have to say, well, we put limited to. But frankly speaking, I've had some applicants who've said, I'm going to put up screening. I'm going to actually put up a wire and put up, you know, muzzling and I'm going to be screening. It's not, it's not really the intent. And that's why, it's because we're limiting you to landscaping, wooden fencing, earth and wood, a combination of everything.
Otherwise it's landscaping, so using wooden fences.
Wooden fencing? So that, that does not allow for like the chain link, woven, like.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I don't think that's any friendly. Do you? It's great if it's in Detroit.
What, what do you have to be friendly with this? Isn't it common to know like your society, how to be neighborhood friendly? To, to screen, I mean, you want it to look good and you can have those folks look good. What's not, I don't understand what you're not friendly.
Well, stripe it, it's about handling friendly. This is your own language right now, this is your ordinance language right now. I, I wouldn't want to see a chain link fence with any kind of strapping or.
Vinyl slats.
Vinyl slats on the residential, we're talking residential area here. Okay, any, any other discussion on it, anybody have any other comments on the percentages?
Right?
What do you guys want to go? With the percentages asked, okay?
As long as we can measure it, I'm fine with it.
50% is pretty easy.
50%?
It's very easy to choose.
60%?
It's easy to choose. I would venture to say Bentley's had 50% when they just had the vegetation. Okay, bring us to the polls. Bring it, anybody have a motion on keeping it just the way it's written, the scores percentages?
I move to keep, to accept the percentage of that.
With or without the homogeneous distribution.
One thing I like about John, he responds to the loophole.
Not always, it's not hard, it's not a loophole. That's the problem with a lot of what we do here. We, we have this idea in mind, but it doesn't always follow the, the concept that you're thinking of.
Well, we can go with. I'm sorry, you have a motion.
No, wait, second to.
Well, we can get rid of at the time of installation. Yeah? I'm moving, I'm saying. It's not evenly distributed.
Because then it may not stay evenly distributed based upon the growth.
You know, 50% and 0%, that's evenly distributed.
No, 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 you're going 50%. Depends on how you're measuring either. If you've got 0 or 1, that averages out to 1/2.
You would have to say 50% at all focal points.
Well, homogeneous distribution is, but I guess even at, right.
Because if it dies.
You can't make it homogeneous. You have a definition for homogeneous. Unless you use, unless you use a fence. That's about it. John, I make it homogeneous.
Which is why I was.
John, you have a definition for homogeneous because I don't know what the hell it means.
Evenly distributed.
Better. That's better than.
Yeah, but that still doesn't really work because at least in the way I look at it, if you have 100%, 0%, it's still a distribution.
It's the same thing.
Yeah. See, I, I think if I were trying to do it, I'd say, you know, make it 50% from the focal points that you're looking at. So if you're in that other building, at any point that you are looking across, you have to have 50% blockage.
From what level?
Any level.
Are you talking about the second story, third story?
Yeah. You're talking about blocking the, the view of the building, so you would have to have it from any, any point. And, and that becomes difficult. So may, maybe you want to say from the first floor.
You have a whole plane that you're working on, not just a point, that's what I was trying to say before. So there's a lot of, of points there. But, uh, yeah, that, that would get to the, to the intent much better. 50% as viewed from.
From the first floor.
Ground level.
Because if you, because if you've got a bigger building than, than, if you had this, this spot out here, this, this, uh, the Blue Christmas light place, I can't think of how to describe it other than that.
For John's neighbor.
If you're up on the second floor, there's no way you're going to block that. So you would have to pick it from the first floor to have that blockage. Yeah, right off of.
Sort of chalet.
Right behind our historical society.
Right where they put the two houses.
It's kind of, it's kind of very high peak roof. Ah, but I don't know, I don't get down that part of town, of the city.
You should come visit us sometime. The night blockage area.
Is it homogeneous for the property?
Yeah, it actually is.
Okay, so as, uh, so blockage of, achieving blockage of whatever percentage.
At ground level.
Well, say that.
High level.
From.
We're making it more difficult.
Well, yeah, but if you don't do that.
Well, my crystal ball doesn't show it.
Okay, then. We're losing our 10-page concept. Right, okay, and if you want to make it simplify, just put it in the discretion of the board for everything.
I think that actually is better because you, it should be done on a case by case basis. We're not going to have these cheap ad jowel anyway, we're going to have a few here and there.
Is this a conditional use?
Yeah.
Okay, then that's going to be, you know, the condition of use. What's that? Screening, at the discretion of the board. So whatever you want. Whatever they approve.
Not the board.
No.
Whatever they want. I'm saying if you want to simplify, I mean, John wants to simplify.
Well, that will simplify it, but it also gives, gives the applicant absolutely no idea what they have to do.
Yeah.
See, in Bentley's, they at least knew what they had to do. You will not see it.
About you.
You won't see it.
From the first floor.
Okay. No, actually it said from all floors.
No.
It said from the residence. So if you put a, you put a widow walk on the roof, it's the residence.
That's right.
This was, we've been through this. We reduced it down to the first floor.
Yeah, and I, I think that's why.
The first floor should be here, yeah, it's.
Yeah, and this courage, you lose the discretion of the board because.
I'm only throwing that out of all this thing along, see if that.
You kind of move along, but you're guiding them on in the trouble of, you know.
Well, we're using.
Our crystal ball doesn't shine.
Doesn't matter, Marty, whether you got a crystal ball or not, you're going to run into problems if you say at the discretion of the board. Because nobody can enforce it.
Well, they can, they, they just do it arbitrarily and capriciously.
Okay, so why are you allowing him to have it and you're not allowing me to have it and you're allowing his kind of.
That's arbitrary and capricious. Yeah.
You can't do that.
Right, that's why we're trying to come up with a standard that's forcible. And it's still meet the objective of not being saying, everything's got to be blocked off.
I was okay with the percentages, it's just long as you guys can make sure that it's measurable. That was my only concern with being, you know, whether it's actually measurable or not. Because somebody's going to complain somewhere, it's somewhere, it's at some point in time and you're going to have to say why you did what you did.
And if you're really looking, in many cases here, it's going to be, it's going to be people who are, we're, we're really trying to deal with worst case scenarios here. Because 50 feet, so the limit is less than 50 feet and you are one district, as we said, that's a non-conformal use in the beginning.
Right.
Right, right there, because the minimum setback, inside setback is 25 feet. So 50, less than 50 feet means somebody, somebody's not in their setback. More than, if you're down there, down 50% from there on and the farther you get away, eventually you get to 100 feet, which is 50 foot either side, you know, of the property line. You know, that's, frankly speaking, that's not a lot of distance. And that's where it becomes the discretion of the board. But in those situations where people are on top, I mean, if we look at Ms. Drow's situation in Europe, you don't have anybody within 200, 300, 400 feet.
Well, the neighbor more than 100 feet.
Oh, more than 100.
Yeah.
Absolutely. People across the street, they're 300, 400 feet.
In that situation, however, the neighbor is higher than me. So they, they would be looking down at the retail building. Uh, even from, well, yeah.
Grade an elevation. Grade an elevation. You got grade an elevation?
Yeah.
You're in a residential area and there are going to be in some spots, there are going to be people that are going to say, I don't want a business in a residence.
Well, it requires a five acre, we give one.
Yeah, it does require a five acre.
Okay.
That's a start.
Which is still a business in a residential area.
Now, I, we, I posed that question before, is a business supposed to stop somebody else from me and saying, I have farm tractors. Why can't I put a farm tractor in cash shop in a residential area?
Because you're not growing, you're not growing a child. Corn.
Shut you down.
That's not bad. You're only yet, you're making it.
You've been through a lot of those interesting.
Okay. Move this along.
Right. I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the percentages.
Well.
I, I would question the percentages in ER 3 and ER 4, but I'm fine if we use percentages.
Percentage is something to hang your hat on, 20% blockage is not a lot.
No, I, I agree, uh, the other.
But how would you possibly, let's go back to, you know, the, the alpaca park. How would you, if we needed screening in that case, how would you possibly achieve it? If the neighbors are up above the operation, it would be impossible to achieve.
Well, they're more than 100 feet away, so it's, it's against our discretion.
It's not, John. How do we do it on, how do we do it on case? We located the point, we did it, we did a, basically a, a, a section to determine how you could see down, you know, what the topography was, what the angle was, where you would see it from and what the color vision was at that particular point. You put things way up close to the color vision on, you know, near, near the property line and it basically blocked the view where it needed to be.
If your neighbors were looking down on it, if you put it at the property line, they're going to look over top?
Yeah, it, well, we were look, when we were talking about Kate's though, we were talking, Kate's is, is higher up, so. And we, and we were talking about blocking the parking lot, which was much easier to do than trying to block the building. In this case, the neighbor is up looking down. We were down looking up, it's much easier to block down looking up than it is the other way around.
I mean, you know, actually it's hard, it's hard to do, it's hard to screen something that's, that's an elevation and it is down. Because you push it, you push it closer to the, to the, the viewpoint.
I would say it, it would be very hard for me to block, uh, the house that is no longer there if I were up the case, but.
Of course, the question is, how much, why do we want to block it? Oh, I'm not saying the next step you want to. The object is just to try to create a filter, that's why the 50%, is to try to create some sort of filter. Not trying to block it, we're trying to block it and say, you will not see that building from what is living quarters. We'll do exactly what we did at Bentley's and Bentley's situation was damn near impossible because of topography. Or very hard to do, quite frankly.
Filter screening should really just be, to me, just be the parking. Because building is a building, right? I mean, she's gonna use a building that's already there. I mean, a few people are gonna use a building that's already there. You don't want to screen the building, you just want to screen all the cars that are parked all around that.
Good point.
Well. It does seem both, and we have, you know, in the R two district, we have a fifteen hundred square foot retail building, that's as big as a single, a good sized single family home. That's a lot of area, you know. But in the R three district, we go up to five thousand square feet. That's a big building.
That's a building, five thousand square foot house.
Yep.
Yep.
But it doesn't have, you know, forty cars coming in.
But that point of the parking. That, that makes a good point, that I must have never thought about it. But it's not be easier to block just the parking.
Well, it says the building and the parking.
So we can change that.
Yeah, of course. You're writing it. And you'll notice that the, down below, it talks about the parking specifically shielding it from the front. When you get to certain size parking lots, saying, okay, you get up, you get up to thirty, and you get up to twenty, and now you're gonna start screening it from the front. So it's not on. Look, I mean, you know, the other way of doing this, if, if this is causing so much consternation, the other way of doing this would be just say, you know, the intent is to, is to state the intent, the building shall not intrude, shall not unduly, whatever that means, intrude upon the, uh, the views of adjacent residential properties within a certain amount of distance, and, and screening shall be provided. The applicant shall screen buildings, you know, sufficiently to, uh, to prevent the, the building from being a visual impact to the adjacent neighbors. At the discretion of the board.
I think parking, parking is more, parking is more.
Building or parking?
You know, I mean, building, building because you turn on, you, you, you're starting back at how you guys screen a building, turn on it, if it's two stories or vice versa. Should be parking, parking is your major concern.
I would, you know.
I don't disagree with parking being, being more important than the building in some cases, but a five thousand square foot building, you might want to have some softening up.
Well.
You know, residential.
I mean, it, it's, it's.
We're going circle, 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 and we're getting nowhere, yeah?
You know, you're talking about a five thousand square foot building, you're also telling there's gonna be a residence, I mean, the residence could be another five thousand square feet. Now, you get ten thousand square feet structure and a parking lot.
Unless the residence comes in.
Well, somebody's saying, you know, retail buildings shouldn't screen.
Yeah, retail.
Right.
So maybe, so maybe we should reduce the size in the R three and R four of that building and not have it be a five thousand square foot building. And I understand a barn can be that big, but we're not talking a barn, we're talking about a retail operation.
Could be a barn.
Well, we're talking about five thousand square foot retail space.
Yeah. So maybe we should just have.
Which is half the size of a, uh, lady.
So maybe we should reduce the size of that building.
Sure, it's about the size of Gillespie's. But that's what Gillespie's is, not five thousand. Old Gillespie's over in North Yarmouth.
I'll be right, the, the Rides, the Rides are about ten, eleven thousand rounds.
That's a lot of buildings. Yeah, it's a lot of retail space.
For something that's in a residential area.
But I mean, I've seen, I've seen, Maxwell's has got a small one, but Gillespie's out in Route nine, the old Gillespie's.
Oh, yeah.
That was a fairly good size, but that was probably, it was over a hundred feet long.
Okay, let's just say we, we would purchase a car, and about we're using a five thousand square foot. How, would that?
Well, why are we doing that?
That's why I just want to screen it.
That's what I'm asking. I mean, why, why do we want to reduce by thousands?
Well, I personally happen to think that's a huge amount of retail space to put in a residential zone.
Well, it's not a residential, it's in a, it's in a agriculture preservation district. Well, that's not residential, it's agricultural preservation.
Not preserving much agriculture, but a five thousand square foot building.
You are, if you're selling.
If it's a product.
Well, go backwards.
I, honestly, I would, I would, I think Dan had a valid point, and just eliminate, just have screening on the parking lot. And not on the building. And if a five thousand square foot building is five thousand square foot building.
Which.
Or it's a smaller building. If we're gonna, because it's really gonna be difficult, this really five thousand square foot building.
We'd have no problem with a five thousand square foot square block building with a ladder.
Of course I would. I've already said I don't think it should be that.
So we're only in your, in your design standards for the building, put that the building must.
And around the round you go, because you just make it more complex. You can add another ten pages just describing that.
No, I mean, you could say it has to resemble a farm building.
Public standard that we put up on Kate.
I see some.
So I would only tell my way to raise the rule standard.
Well, do we want to look at what we put in the agricultural demonstration project district?
Use those standards.
Here, you know what that was? It's gotta look like a farm building.
But we're, we're also allowing.
Which could be a silo, it could be, uh, it could be a.
How you gonna screen a silo?
Is that what happened to the two car garage? Unless we're shooting pistols at it, we have to make that look like a farm building?
No, we're talking only about the retail space.
Yeah.
If you have a building, you can make it consistent with the, you know, adjacent building, the surrounding building.
Well, I, I think I, I would only want to do that with something that was large. I don't think I want to impose Pam with having to redesign a garage to make it look like Kate's. And put a gambrel on it, I don't think that explains where we want to go. Most part, actually, most of these kind of facilities have, have shed roofs on them.
Yeah.
Okay, they really do, they honestly have shed roofs, they might have a salt box kind of thing, where it's mainly a shed roof, and they've got a peak and then a, you know, a tall, twelve roof coming down just for a short period, but, you know, it's, most of these structures are not going to be great pieces of architecture, and it's only when you get big that you might want to start saying, hey, let's see you do this a little bit more in the farm kind of motif that we're trying to seek in this.
Well, I, I go with the bottom's, uh, Richard's discussion, five thousand square feet can be big to some degree.
Yeah. Yeah.
So a five thousand.
You live in a five hundred square foot building, you have five thousand block.
With five thousand square feet of silver block.
Yep.
And silver block is not even used today that much.
Well.
I think we're getting off the screen.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Off the screen. So we're getting way off the screen.
I think, um, if you guys don't feel good about trying to set standards on how much screening should occur based on distance, then, uh, I'm gonna just have to do something very generic and, and discretionary. Not actually much different than, uh, what we had before, uh, you know, ordinance, and if you recall, the first one, first law I showed you at this, basically said you had to stab a strip of either natural vegetation or you had to bring in some landscaping. Natural existing tree cover or vegetation. We all installed, one was ten, one was fifteen. That's what we started with, we wanted to go with something that was more variable, that allowed more discretion, this gives somebody some discretion, but it's still too empirical, so we gotta go with something less empirical. And we need the discretion of the board, because we can't waste any more time on this.
Okay, let me just bring up one more point, do we want to remove building from the screening?
Yes.
And just do a parking lot?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
No.
No, there's some cases of the link.
Oh, I think that's just to work on the screen of a building for that.
Okay.
But I'd still rather concentrate on how we can define what the forty or the fifty percent is.
Okay, well.
Why don't we think about it until next year?
Mrs. Drew doesn't want to keep coming back. She's always down the road.
Yeah, let's. How do we feel about that? Section C, just the discussion of the parking lot.
I, I.
Can we at least agree that that's?
Section B?
Section C, screen the front yard parking lot?
Oh, yeah, no, I don't like that at all. I think that should come out completely.
You don't want to screen the front parking lot?
Although you're asking people to build a big berm.
Oh, well, that's, that's, yeah.
More vegetation.
Come on.
You know what, I love these.
You're, you're going crazy, you're, this is a simple agricultural operation. And we're asking for a berm that's four and a half feet high?
Can we plant in the berm?
Why bother?
While you eat.
Why bother? Just grass it. Strip, push it over, push it outside, plant it.
And with that, you can plant in the berm.
The object was try to, try to use what you're tearing off the top to basically, you know, create a buffer there. Because what you don't want to do is see, see cars. Or maybe we do want to see a, see a car. You guys tell me, this is for the larger areas where you have more than twenty cars in the front yard. That means R four, R three and R four, right?
They're, they're building something that's, that have twenty spaces in the front, they're pretty much commercial.
Yeah. Twenty spaces is the R two section.
Pushing a little dirt.
Yep, more than twenty. So more than twenty.
Okay.
More than twenty parking spaces in the front yard.
And also, John, that, that last sentence says requirement maybe way by.
Not mighty boys.
I think that gives us a little bit of discretion from the life of the man. Because it says alternative landscaping.
Because if Kates had done this like they should have in the beginning, we wouldn't have had to go through all that nonsense of landscaping. How's that? Because we would have never had a problem, we would have never seen the cars, we would have seen the building, you'd never seen the cars from any angle, you wouldn't have had to go through a lot of work with you.
Well, most farms aren't landscaped. Most farms are being worked.
Yeah, this isn't a farm.
Dressing up a farm to, for a prettiness.
It's retail.
Marty, you make my case, we shouldn't have retail in the, in these zones.
Then what do you want, turn everything into just a hobby homeowner residences?
It is a residential.
It is a residential district, Marty.
All right, here's, here, to move, to move this thing along, how about this, I will give you two alternatives, I will send it to you in the email.
For next year?
For next year's meeting.
Well, next year's meeting, uh.
Well, you're not meeting the rest of this year.
That's the next meeting.
Meeting for you, it won't be for me.
That won't be for me either, I'll be in Las Vegas. I won't be here until the.
Okay, boy, you make that much better.
You're gonna, you're gonna, no.
All right, what do you want me to do for an all, I'm gonna give you two alternatives, one is the generic, do you screen at the planning board's discretion, okay? Based on criteria, whether or not the, uh, it's, whether the building is, uh, is an impact on adjacent property. You can struggle with that, you know, when it comes to defining what impact is.
Too subjective.
Yeah, well, the whole thing's too subjective, but you're not, you don't want to go the empirical route. So I'm gonna give you an empirical one, I'm gonna give you a subjective one. You got something in between, please, please write it down. But, um.
I'm, I'm perfectly willing to go with this, this way. Viewed from the first floor of the adjacent property at all focal points looking at the building. It has to be the fifty percent or the sixty percent, so that if I'm standing on the, on the southeast corner, it's gotta be that, that fifty percent. If I'm standing on the northeast corner, it's gotta be that fifty percent. If I'm halfway in between, it still has to be that fifty percent. I'm perfectly fine with the percentages, I, Blaise, and I have to take your word for it that it's possible to block them, but I'm perfectly fine with the percentages.
I am too.
Can we do diagrams?
Yeah, well, I was, I was just gonna say, we, we have to do a diagram.
Acceptable, non-acceptable?
Yeah.
But, yeah, you have a cone from point A, like at the corner of the building.
Yeah.
You'll have a cone, and we'll have to define that, well, no, the cone will be the limits of the parking and the building. That will be the outside edges.
Yeah.
And then everything in between has to be whatever percentage.
Yeah.
Evenly distributed.
No, because if you look anywhere along that line, it has to be the fifty percent.
Well, okay, that, that kind of defines itself, right? Right.
Well, with that reason, because if you're using a tree as for screening, you're gonna have gaps. And the gap space is gonna be zero percent screen, the tree will be on.
So how can you, yeah?
You can use the tree, the, the idea is to, is to create that blockage, if the trees are there, you've got something that blocks it built in.
Yeah.
I mean, based on that, I could go put up a farm retail at my house right now, my, I can see my neighbor, but I can tell you my neighbor wouldn't see fifty percent, I could only see about ten percent of his house.
Right.
And that's nothing but trees.
Because we have that area you think, this, this is really gonna apply to people in, in open areas.
Right.
You want all your whole space?
Yeah, and that, and that, that's another thing, like, in open areas, I'm thinking of R four, where you have a lot of open fields. Do you really want to start putting up screening in those open fields?
No, because it's more, more than two hundred feet, it becomes a discretion of the board.
Because your setbacks.
Yeah, that's gonna be, okay.
Remember, your set, your front yard setback is a hundred feet in the R four district.
Well, that's not much.
Your side setback is, uh, thirty-five, and your rear setback's fifty.
I move into, till we go to discuss this next year, but we aren't getting anywhere now.
Okay, so you're gonna, just to bring us to a close, you're gonna write something that would be acceptable to all of us as far as screening, I, I think we all agree on a percentage basis.
I don't know if I can do that, but I'm gonna try to do something that, that finds a middle ground somewhere.
Okay, okay, I'll agree with that. We all agree on the percentage basis, we're just gonna have a definition of.
Of what? You want a definition of?
How are we gonna determine that? Well, yeah, with, with a diagram and some kind of description of how you measure, you know, how that measurement is taken.
Taking that kind of installation, right, taking that with the.
Yeah.
Yeah, you killed that.
Okay, any other further discussion on farm retail, you just beat me to it, that's all.
I know. I was waiting for it.
Well, that, that part C, did we want to discuss that?
Yeah, you want to, tell me whether or not part C goes in or stays.
The rest of the board feels about it, you know, I feel about it.
Oh, man. Hey, why not just say, they shall install screening? Yeah, I, I don't understand the, you know, it's, it's either an earth berm or vegetation.
Well, the idea of the four feet is so that you can see the tops of the cars, you can see the cars.
So why can't I put up a, a picket fence right down the, the length of my driveway to block the road? And we allow wooden fencing, why not just say, okay, I can block the parking lot using wooden fencing?
Yeah.
That's the second problem.
Yeah, you can do that. You're good fencing. The whole idea was basically to say, you know, if you want to see the tops of the cars, so you could know there's parking there, and just don't make the cars out of.
Right, so you just.
You don't want to see a car sort of there in front.
So you just eliminate that, you say it has to be four and a half feet in finished height, and you eliminate the rest of it, about is it a berm, is it vegetation, and whatever you feel like putting in there.
Yeah, okay.
Arbor lilies, do they grow that high?
Arbor lilies?
Yeah, I have no idea what an arbor lily is, I got this one, it's a plant.
It's.
It's a green bush.
I agree with you.
Trees.
Okay, so we're gonna take out earth and work modeling.
Well, we're not, we're gonna keep that in there, but we're not gonna, we're gonna say, shall install either. Shall install, screening be it.
Oh, I would have just said screening no less than four and a half feet in finished height. And then let it, so let the owner decide what they want to do.
What percentage?
I don't need percentage on this.
You sure you do?
All farm, this, this is.
Well, this is one screen.
All accountants need percentages.
All farm retail parking lots containing more than twenty parking spaces in the front yard shall install screening no less than four and a half feet in finished height above the surface grade of the parking lot. Between the parking lot and a public street, I have to put in a four and a half foot high barrier.
That's a hundred percent blockage, screening is not necessarily.
Screening's not.
Okay, then, then call it a hundred percent blockage. Was that what they did?
Yeah.
I see those all the time. I see those all the time.
Yeah.
I have no idea what they are. I don't know one tree from another, it's a tree.
You should get out more.
You can go to Home Depot, Garden Center, Charles Shike.
And you can get them at a good price this time of year.
Okay, uh, the, the whole idea of screening, and remember something about screening, guys. And we can define what screening is and what buffering is. And quite frankly, I've done that before, where I had a definition of screening means that you cannot, you provide vegetation, topography, earthwork, or other such things defining what you can use, and you achieve seventy-five percent visual penetration, seventy-five percent blockage, or twenty-five percent visual penetration to a site on the other side. Screening is the same thing, you can have a definition for blocking, you have a definition, or, excuse me, a definition for buffering, and a definition for screening, and that applies throughout anywhere we use the word. I got screening here, and I got buffering here. Here you got a buffering, which means I gotta have ninety percent, I can't see ninety percent of what's on the other side. Screening, I could see up to fifty or sixty-five percent on the other side.
Right, okay.
I mean, that might be the way to go. We just, we go back to the definition.
Then you go back to the definition.
Then you go back to the definition and say, hey, you gotta screen this, or you gotta... And the planning board, you know, you, um, you know, we can give you an out on this and say, you know, in certain circumstances, the planning board can, can modify this based on our conditions to, should she, you know, the, the least amount of visual impact to neighbors. Give you some discretion to play with it. But I think instead of trying to go through this whole thing of percentage and distances and so forth, we should just, I, I should just come up with definitions for screening.
How are you? You already have a definition for screening.
Yeah, no, I already wrote it, I just didn't present it to you. Thanks, I was gonna, maybe look like I've done a lot of work.
I'm getting it.
I've already done the work, yeah. That's in, that's in definitions, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you look. You were saying screening, buffering, and what, was longer through?
No, I, I'm still trying to come up with another one. I think screening is, I get, now you're gonna make me look at what I learned.
I wanna read it.
Screening is, uh, what, seventy-five?
Page, page twenty-nine, section three.
That's right, I forgot I already did that. Yep. Screening, screening. Oh, well, that's okay. The application of earthwork, vegetation, fences, walls, or combination thereof for the purpose of, one, establishing twenty-five to seventy-four percent visual blockage of one land use from another, or, two, articulating a physical and visual separation of adjacent land uses. See, buffering. So, anywhere between twenty-five and seventy-five, you guys pick how much screening you want. That's the variable screen, and then we're gonna buffering, and it's gonna be seventy, seventy-five percent blockage.
It's seventy-five to a hundred and forty percent. How do I block a hundred and forty percent?
Forty percent.
Well, that sounds like a typo, I've been doing a lot of this for a second.
Not only can't I see it, but I can't see it.
That's the point of the black hole.
That's all I'm doing. Apparently.
Suck the leg right in.
It is black hole. Okay, so you've got, you've got sort of fission reaction here. Fusion, that's gonna need fusion. You need a fusion reaction to get that.
Okay, so that gives us a lot.
That gives you something to work with, so you've got buffering, you've got screening. Screening gives you a lot of variability, doesn't it?
It does.
Does that make you feel better?
It does.
Okay. I'm sorry, I should have yanked that out, I forgot, I, thanks, you know, I actually forgot I already wrote that in. I'd read yours.
I know that since the beginning of the meeting.
There's so much of this stuff, I forget what I've written.
Oh, you get there way down.
Dad, I know that since the beginning of the meeting, and I was just waiting.
Waiting for you.
Okay, that sounds good, and then we can see what that is.
Don't you have to work later or something?
Well, we'll see, we make it buffering.
So, you make it buffering.
Yeah, for the parking lot, the front yard parking lot.
Make it buffering for that, and make screening on, on the other side.
On the other side.
So what point, so you guys get to pick between twenty-four and seventy-four. Twenty-five and seventy-four. So there's your variability you want.
Right.
Okay? So you're gonna have to make the call, so what I'm gonna do is say, use screening and buffering in this particular case, and then cite what the, what the end goal is, basically, to minimize any negative visual impacts on adjacent residential properties. That will give you an opportunity to use existing vegetation, obviously. It'll give you an opportunity to use distance, because distance is a factor, as we well know at, over at Dubois, where we had, what, six hundred meters between the, you know, the, uh, the different residences. So, that gives you the discretion to simplify this and get rid of the super table.
Okay.
Okay?
That works.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Thanks, man, actually.
Actually, I would rather see, in the screening, the definition still saying the twenty-five to seventy-four, unless otherwise stated, and keep the tables in there for this parking lot.
Yeah.
I would simply because I wanna keep it consistent throughout the entire ordinance.
Thrown it out there, thrown it back if you don't mind. It's not, it's your, it's your audience, John, it looks good for my house.
I, I'd rather keep it consistent throughout the entire ordinance, without, without creating unique circumstances.
As Marty likes to say, what's good for the goose, is good for the hen.
All right. Any further comment on farm retail?
No.
Okay, so we can try to wrap this up by nine thirty, let's head to downtown business district, signage. This ought to take over about a week.
No, because you know why? It's not gonna take a week. Because I had a bid opening, I had to do, do something, do a whole bunch of stuff for EDC, and I had a meeting, and I had to have a staff review, and guess what? I haven't finished that. Didn't get it done.
Okay.
Okay, can't get it done in three days, guys. Cannot get it done, don't have time.
Okay, then, uh, let's get.
So I would say, we'll, we'll go to next year. There you go, Marty.
Got the case, let's, uh, you guys wanna get into the discussion on proposed uses, mixed, maximum building sizes and mixed proposals?
I'd rather start with just with the district boundaries, so that we know what area we're talking about.
Okay.
And then we can, we can look at, say, you know, well, what uses and what size buildings are we talking about in there? This way we can at least define.
Very good, Mr. King.
Because if we find D V one, I'd like to define D V two as, these are the boundaries that we'll look at.
All right, well, yeah.
Just my opinion, but that's.
Well, that's, that's fun.
You'll find that.
Sort of like he's the old boss. And we haven't changed the map, and he's from the last time we did this.
Right, but there's been debate about whether or not we're going, that's the, what we wanna use. And we should, we should at least clarify and say, yes, that is the area.
I'm not sure that's gonna be useful for our at-home viewers.
Well, I guess they don't care anyway.
Word for Marty, because he's at the far end.
All right, don't we have Zoom?
Okay, what?
Don't we have Zoom at home?
Yeah.
I'm gonna have to go operate it.
Do you have any drafts in D V two? Mine, you did copies, or is that for public?
Of course it is.
Do I have any?
Yes. I don't have any here. But I, you can look at mine.
Okay, if you can email it or?
Sure, no, I'll email it.
All right, yeah.
It's still in, it's right there for review one.
In section seven.
Yep, in section seven-three, correct? Or section four? Seven-three?
Seven-three is.
Yeah, that's what I want, D V two. Gene, who is what you were looking for? All right, boundaries, gentlemen. Remember, this is, we went with the, um, decided we're gonna go with the, uh, property line boundary instead of the distance boundary. Well, actually, we got a, we got a, a sort of a hybrid. We have some distances and some boundaries. We have distances in places where we have the D V one crossing large parcels of land. Uh, then we have vacant land, let me put it that way. Then we have, uh, D V, then we have the following property lines, and as we had talked before, and we had not resolved this by the way. A resolution to the problem that we had originally, where we have existing businesses. And the concern was, as you recall, what creation of this new dis, these two, these two new districts would in fact, might render somebody non-conforming. And that was something we wanted to avoid, as you recall, in the language in D V one, and it'll be the same language in D V, well, it'll be the same language in D V one, because that was the restrictive one. That, um, that any existing business is, that business, that business, not the use, that business, that specific use, that's an existence at the time of disorderance, is a conforming use. And as long as it stays in that business, you know, whether it be sold to another person and so forth, that business will always be a conforming use in that location.
And does not have limits on expansion, usually, but.
Yeah. Okay? So, that, that solved the problem, which might make us look at even as improbable as it may be. You may recall, this map reflects a resolution to that problem, or an attempt to resolve that problem, without that language, and that was down in the Oriental Ford and Weir's Motor, and those are specifically identified here. And remember, we took the D V one district all the way to the, to Route one. If, with that language now, we could pull that back, if you wanted to make uniform districts there.
I think we should, and I think it would be good to have it as a uniform district.
So then the doors still have that business ad infinitum.
And I think that there's a, there's another reason, other than just having it being a uniform district, it avoids the appearance of partiality.
Yes.
As if we were trying to specifically zone a section to Sutao.
I mean, we did the same thing at Atlantic Storage, where you remember we pulled that into it, because we have an existing use there, no potential for any expansion in the future. However, you know, the thing is, probably less with Weir's, but actually, with any of these land uses, there is a time, there could be a time, because of market forces, because of, uh, business decisions, whatever, if those uses discontinue for whatever reason, or relocate, then suddenly we have a, we have a hole in a zone with vacant buildings that may not be filled with the same use in the future. Highly unlikely, considering some of the building investments, but stranger things will happen. So we would have more consistency in here, so when we do that, we bring it back in, bring it back out at Atlantic Storage and over at Weir's and Oriental Ford. Everything else is, uh, is pretty uniform, as you can see, where we, where we got funky in this whole thing was, uh, looking at, um...
Yeah, Walker's Lane.
And Walker's Lane is the only place, and we have not really explored that yet. I mean, we, that's being driven more by the fact that, you know, we have large piece of land, um, off of Route one, uh, that frankly, is residential, but we have non-residential uses there in the past. And perhaps that's driven more by the prospect of, uh, gee, we have that Speedway out there, can we do anything to make that into private property? Well, it's all private, private property. Because can, can that, could that benefit from being a, a, a commercial use? Well, we have a huge amount of land out there. That's undeveloped, some wetland problems, there's some wetland constraints, there's some high water table constraints, but then again, this is a run, we have high water table problems all over the place. Uh, our wetland constraints aren't as bad as I thought. Flood plain is pretty, is pretty, uh, well-defined, which is very narrow.
But where's your river?
So. The river's right here.
Are we following property lines?
We are following property lines to the most part. You'll see back here, I'm, I'm kind, I'm almost disappointed, sorry, man. Uh, almost got, I, several of the Old Post Road folks, uh, who are at, um, SiteWalk and Public Tree that we had today and other application, uh, had expressed interest in what we were doing for obvious reasons. We just wanted to show them, you know, where this, where the new line is gonna be, because this is a, a pretty substantial expansion from the thousand feet that we have right here. But we're, we're pretty much following the property lines along here, we do a cut through here, well, this property line into here, we keep along all the property lines. And for the most part, except for the, the, uh, D V one, the D V two pretty much follows all property lines.
If D V one, if we're looking at, because if you're gonna slice those, like the, uh, the Weir's Motors and Oriental Ford properties, if you're gonna slice those, then you have to do the same thing down at the bottom.
Right, okay.
Go down, yeah, there, but down further, yeah, right there.
And Oriental Playhouse?
Yeah, I mean, you know, you either do or you don't, but don't do it some places and not others.
Well, I think one of the reasons I didn't do a Oriental Playhouse is I'm not sure why I wanted to cut their, cut their parking lot from their, their facility.
Well, it's kind of what you're doing at the, at the dealership.
Well, the dealership, the, the buildings are in the D V one. In fact, most of the display are in the buildings, so it was D V one. But, I mean, I could do that, I mean, we could, if we want, if we're gonna do that, we certainly can do that here.
And, and we should, if we, if we're gonna make it uniform, let's make it uniform.
It's, it's, it's pretty clean.
Where is Old Post Road?
This is Old Post Road right here.
Okay, I thought, oh, last, I thought our last discussion.
Yeah.
You said the D V two was all the way coming to include Old Post Road. That's where I said I was confused on where the lines were.
Down here I was thinking, and that's, uh, Old Post.
What?
Oh, this is Old Post, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we do, we come down to Old Post on Oriental Playhouse.
That was always in the business district, right? So I mean, he's, what is your depth of your B, uh, D V two depth from Route one?
Uh, varies between two thousand, um, I don't know, on the scale here.
Just give me a ballpark, I'm not asking you for it.
I think it's more than two thousand, two thousand, remember, Marty, it was the thousand before, we're doubling that.
It was that twelve fifty at one time.
No, it's one thousand. It's one thousand right now. That's what the district is, it's one thousand, we're doubling. Someplace is even bigger. So, we're making, we're taking the land that's back here that has, um, quite frankly, more development potential than a lot of our, our, our BI district areas, we've talked about, and is not currently developed for residential, it's zoned for residential, but quite frankly, putting roads back in there to develop it for residential is gonna be a long ways off.
That little section off, right there.
Yeah.
That, I was pushing that idea, so, let's see. Why is that D V two and not D V one?
You gave us a good reason last week, but it's in first memory. Because it's a, it's a industrial park.
Oh, yeah, industrial use.
There's a, uh, high, high, uh, right here, there's a very high-end precision machinery shop that provides actually a lot of contract with both the military and to run a machine. We stole them from San.
But if we, if, even if that's D V one, his grandfather did do it anyway.
Yeah, but what put him in that position? That, that whole park is really designed for industrial use.
Okay.
And that was the intent of it, even though the district's kind of, it's, when I say industrial, that's not fair, it's, it's for exactly what it is. It's a niche manufacturing, it's a very small niche manufacturing, which these guys fit that perfectly. And so, these are, uh, this is the only building we want on the, on this whole, this is kind of a stride. Okay? Here's Bentley's, Bentley's, it goes right up against it, so.
Where's the old trailer park, bud?
And, um, right now, in fact, they, they constantly trying to sell this land and be realistic, and looking, you know, if we were putting useful uses in it. But they do have an existing tenant, it's a high-quality tenant, so if you can attract some more in there. And it's perfectly, it's surrounded, it's, it's well insulated, it's a good place for it, really, it's fairly well insulated. The kind of uses we're talking about here, remember, the D V two, that's why we were talking about uses about uses last time, was you folks were so grappling with the issue of what, what other uses, what expanded uses are we going to put in here? Because we want to go way, question is how far beyond the existing DB1 district do you want to grow? In terms of uses, or how far beyond the existing CCS district? The CCS district is limited in the number of uses. We're going to continue those, some of those limited uses and limit them even more just in the narrow strip of the DB1, but allow a greater breadth of uses in the DB2. Bigger buildings, bigger uses, more, more intense kind of development. And, but we still, you know, we're still kind of, still stuck on variations from the DB1. The issue is, you know, how much more intense do you want, want to get? At one point, we were talking about manufacturing if you were going. It really worked.
And I think we still are.
But then you start talking about limiting the buildings, before we didn't have the limitation of building size. And the last time, you were talking about, eh, maybe we need to limit building size. Right now, we have 20,000 square feet as a limit, as a last year.
I don't remember talking about limiting building size in DB2, just.
Well, we have it in the past, that's what came up last, last view. Yeah.
Defeats the purpose.
Well, the question becomes, do you want to put a 300, what if you, do you want to put a 300,000 square foot building back in there? You could, if you don't put some kind of limitation on it.
If we can get Pratt and Whitney going down, that's a dynamic. How's CCN here?
My concept of that would be that that would be too big and it would be along down in the BI. You know, we're talking about a backup to the DB1.
Yeah.
Question is, what's the integration to the two?
Right.
We have to be mindful once again of the comprehensive plan. If DB2 is pushing comprehensive plan in the first place, if we open it up too much, I think we're going to be concurred to a comprehensive plan.
Well, we're going to do it simultaneously, I'm going to move to the office and figure it out.
Has he, the playhouse, has he split the playhouse?
Well, I did before, but we just.
So what's the majority of, which one's the majority, the DB1 or DB2?
Well, the parking lot is in the DB1.
DB2 would be the majority.
The majority of the house and the structures in the DB2. Check that on Airlock County. It's pretty much one of them. They would, for that whole operation to follow with DB2. Well, yeah, we still have to talk about that issue of, of percentage of lot. And that's why I'm trying to avoid that. I want that to disappear. Because it's, I frankly find foolish to split lots. Here at Oriental Ford, I don't have a problem with it because we've taken care of that existing use. You are, you'll always be that way. We're doing it in some of these larger lots where we know if, you know, the whole economy collapses as we come back and.
We'll find out in a couple of weeks.
You know. No, it's actually 21st. It is next week.
No, no, no. It's the world.
No, not that.
It's the Cliff.
The world's ending on the 21st, the Cliff doesn't get here for other things.
I've been invited to a world-ending party now.
Well, if that's happening, there's really, we're getting moving on the temple because we got a long ways to go.
That's right.
So, anyway. But right now, what we're trying to do is avoid that, set these two locations where we have larger parcels of land and existing uses, to try to prevent the splitting of lots because it just causes, as we know, causes a issue. And it's not a pretty district, but it's functional. You know, and we're expanding it greatly, I mean, really, what are we, so we're, we're expanding it considerably out on Lemmer Road, especially the DB2. And we're out here, I mean, this is Strickland Lane, this is Strickland Lane here. Strickland Lane now is in the DB1 district. That's a residential district right now. Then you go out and they have several businesses out there, as you know.
Yeah.
So you go out Strickland Lane, and actually now, that makes sense because if that's DB2, now you have a potential for connection in through here, and use of that land is something more than residential. And right now, frankly, residential plan is not really going to work very well. And then the same thing down in here where we've got Solar Center, that's in Dagtown right now. Just to remind you, Dagtown, that's why I put it here, Dagtown is right there. That is the limit of the existing CCS district. That's as far as it was across. That was the woodworker that used to be in the.
Used to be Seagull.
Yeah, Seagull.
That's the old Strickland Poplar right there.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's.
That's where the theater was.
Yeah, that's the, that's the current limit of the CCS district. So we're pushing that boundary quite a bit down, we're pushing it to the, to the farm. You know, the big open space in the farm right in here, we're going to the edge of that, that wood lane up there.
One side of the street. You've got two farms right there.
Yeah.
Actually.
Where's the llama farm on that?
Farther down.
Way up.
Well, you have to pay up, okay.
No, it's not that far down. You got horse farm, then you got cow gills, right there.
Yeah.
And cow gills, and the, right there, cow gills is, it used to be all the keys of property.
You know, frankly speaking, I don't want to start stung here, but I mean, if we get, if we get into, redo the council plan, I mean, I'd want to relook at Route 1, at the R1 district anyways. Sure as heck isn't based on solar conditions. So, anyway, you asked for the boundaries, this is the boundary. Changes you want to make, because if I'm going to start putting this in the GIS system, I need to know what you like and what you don't like.
Ken, do you have a copy of, smaller copy for that for us?
Nope. The only, the only thing I don't like, oh, I don't.
I mean. You will have as soon as you put it into the GIS system.
The only thing I don't like would be splitting the, the playhouse on the lot.
What about that?
The only thing I don't like would be splitting the playhouse and lot between DB1 and DB2. Could we not make the whole thing DB1? Or would that not work?
Is that where you're splitting, right now where you're splitting that lot is where the property line is.
No, it isn't. We're splitting the parking lot.
I understand that, try, if you know the property. If you know the property.
Well, that, that is the current property line.
That's what I'm saying.
DB1 allows for playhouses and performing arts.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we could make it all DB1, I don't have a problem with that. It's just.
It's just, it's restrictive on residential. Remember that.
Right. And we're at Old Post here.
Yeah.
And that is residential there also.
If you drew the whole lot.
That, that is the lot there.
That's the whole lot, it's a funky lot. The real only difference is the minimum lot sizes and minimum net lot area for a family unit. Everything else is the same between the two. Well, the only other difference is though that, that the principal uses of the business are private. Where the residents have to be associated with the business or ask in the second, in the upper floors of a, of a business. And the intent is, is to pretty much, quite frankly, stop the proliferation of single-family home housing in the business system. Because it's tough to reverse it once you, once you make that investment of single-family home, it's kind of, it's hard to make it pay for a business later on. And you saw what, you saw what Debbie Cushing went through, you know, rehabbing that building just to, just to put in, you know, a use in a business that's very much well-suited to a single-family home, they had to do a tremendous amount of money, spend a tremendous amount of money to have that to make that work as a business, both retail and production, so.
Yeah, that would just, because of the spark coming up on the end, that would have been really screwy to change it over.
Well, it's, you know, in a way, it's safer for the adjacent properties though. You know, for protection of residential properties along, along Old Post Road, I mean, we're talking about smaller scale, still not residential scale, we're talking about 30,000 square foot buildings. If the need ever arises, I doubt it would occur there, but I mean, that potential exists. And if they ever really wanted to put, if they wanted to expand their facility, 30,000, I think, 30,000, I think it's worth it. But they're charmed up from the barn anyways, you know. And that's really, that's, that's how a lot of their customers. We'll find out, ask them what they think. So what do you think, go with all DB1? It's more conducive to residential, residential properties around it, so.
Well, that was, that was my thought simply because we don't want to split property lots.
Yeah.
Go back up to Weir.
I was just going to say that. I think it's just clear, just the way you have it right now, we, I don't have a portion of it. It's going to be.
Put the parking lot in the DB1.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, because otherwise you're going to end up with that little piece of DB2 that's stuck down into the air and then, I don't know, so.
Or, you know, you might just push it over just a little bit if it, if it falls in that spot. You know, just push it, what is that, east, just a little bit?
Yeah, figures, this one doesn't have, oh, no, the under. Yeah. Wow. Yeah, I mean, actually, if I light it up. All right, if we're going to do that. If I move this up like this.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
I'm going to give them enough of a setback on the other side so if they do some expansion, they can go in that direction.
So what you want to do is have a continuous line from the other side of their property line.
Yeah, I'm looking at this, this problem, well, this is an open field here, as you know. This is open field here.
Yeah.
And this is actually open field there too. I can, you know. No, there isn't, that's.
No, that's a single man, a dwelling.
It's a single-family home, so I can't do it that way. So I'm going to have to do, I'm going to have to do it exactly like this. I'm going to have to come across the street, bump it across, up like this and down.
Okay, where's Branch Brook?
Down here.
Because Branch Brook borders Seafood Center and Turner and, and.
Yeah.
Around the Playhouse.
Yeah. This is where Branch Brook is, right there.
Now, that, it's not all their property?
Well, this is DB, under this, it's going to be DB1. It's going to be DB2 from Branch Brook all the way back to the end of their property is going to be DB2. And the dock is, the doctor, yeah, I mean, the doctor and the pottery maker are all in the DB1 exactly the way it should be. So that works out pretty well. So now that was the scale of the kind of buildings we want. That's, that's, that's almost a sort of a model of what we want to see. In fact, they used, you know, you look at Branch Brook and that is kind of the model. You've got, you've got your office, your more village setting, the more of your community commercial stuff up front, and then right behind, you've got a heavier industrial use back there. And you've got a basically a fuel source and distribution center there, and they could set it to move some of the other pieces from the DB2 district.
More about the 750 feet behind the fuel storage.
Yeah, that's all DB2.
But that almost Turner comes to Old Post Road within 200 feet.
It comes right to here.
Up where Old Post Road is.
Yeah, it's not, not much farther than that.
Yes.
Yeah. Now we make that, let's see, we've got a couple of residents, we've got some residents there. And that's where you guys were talking about increasing the amount of buffering, but I think I've got more than 100.
It's all wooded and then you can't see anything anyway.
Yeah, it's like 150, 150 feet, 200 feet to the next property, to the next residence at the, at the narrowest point. That 200 feet from their property line. So it's, you know, it seems to be working pretty well. Where it gets a little funky is, is right here, and you get into this area in here. These are residential, that's a developed residential right there, and right there.
But that one residential is down a long, long, long.
Oh, yeah, it's a long way. But then we start getting to here, we're getting to open space. We're just basically into undeveloped space. The biggest one we've got, I think, is Rodeo Drive. Rodeo Drive, so. Do we look like we live in Hollywood? Hey, the Dollar Store just won the Rodeo Drive, so. That's what I'm telling you. So I think that's our solution. But otherwise, I mean, trying to set these boundaries down as you wish, this is, the only areas that we have left to really discuss are, you know, this, I mean, this northern boundary, we stopped this at Searls, basically Searls out. And then the big issue is this, whether this is just pushing it way too far. And I'll tell you honestly, I mean, the thing I'm intrigued is, as, as you look, sorry, I didn't show this up on the panel, but you look at the area, this is the space right here. There's our, there's our, there's our, our racetrack. You think racetrack? Got some, some wetland constraints down along the river, but there's some, there's some wet spots here and there, but no rental pools and no, no regulated shoreline zone, wetlands back there, so. Problem is, we've got some nice homes in here on Walker's, Walker's Lane, you know, lousy intersection.
And you got, and you got a nice home right there with this racetrack.
Yeah, there's a nice home with the racetrack, so, you know, I mean, you know, this, this may be pushing the dream too far.
But not if we go behind the racetrack.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Well, that's where most of this is. I mean, that's a huge amount of area back there, and a lot of it's not bad land, it's pretty good. It's in the second tier of the floodplain, I mean, it's an old floodplain, so it's fairly level and it's out of a hundred-year floodplain, and there's not a lot of wetlands in it.
I'd be interested to know what the homeowners.
I'm sure they want to kill us.
On Walker's Lane would like.
I'm pretty sure they would.
Well, look what they, they should ask, look what they get.
We should ask, because if they want to kill it, then I think we should kill it on that particular spot.
Look what they did when we turned out that VIP.
What, do we really need it?
What, do we need it? No, I was exploring, I, I was probably overstepping my bounds.
No, I think, I think it would be a great idea if the guys in Walker's Lane don't have a problem with it. If they're going to have a problem with it, then obviously, you know, anything that goes on is going to go right through their fry eye.
Well, that's all the point, you know, that for residential purposes, as you can see on this map.
It's never going to get residential out there.
Yeah, but I'm saying if you were a resident, it would.
No, I wouldn't.
Okay, neither will I.
I would have to eat up a lot.
Yeah.
I would not have a problem. But these guys might, and if they would, I.
But you would not have a problem with it?
No, I wouldn't. If, if I had a house down there and you turned it into DB2, I wouldn't have a problem with it. But that's me.
Yeah, get to it.
Then you'd have to go up Walker's Lane, which is why I say we need to ask them how they feel about it.
I'm telling you right now, to get to that back property, there's a very limited right of way.
Yeah, there is, there is.
Very limited.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the issue is, I mean, otherwise it's. What would happen here is we would have no DB2 behind this section of the DB1 district.
Especially that.
Yeah.
Well, let's get some input.
We can do that. We're soliciting input from various neighborhoods right now. I mean, the, the Old Post Road folks, I mean, being out there with them, they want to talk to us, they're excited, they want to, they're interested, obviously concerned now, not as much concerned as interested in seeing what we're doing.
Yeah.
They want to meet with us, and of course, on, remember, January 9th, we have the.
It's the 9th, I'm sure, because you weren't sure of the date.
It's the 9th, it is the 9th. And that is, that's why we're going to have the Townhouse Corner meeting. The only problem with the 9th is venue. Because we had it, we had it scheduled for the church, the first congregational church in Townhouse Corner. But the town manager rightly said that really, when you have a Sunday meeting, you really should have it in your hometown and not near the adjacent town. Even though we will be inviting people, in fact, there are officials from Kinnabon Port who want to come and see what we're doing, since we share the same road and head. Right now, we, we have similar districts. We have very restrictive, our Ford district on our side of Lock Haven Road, and they have a very restrictive district on their side of Lock Haven Road. And they're very intrigued to see what our ideas are. Because they might want to join in. So the manager's going to be there, and hopefully the planner will.
Where are we going to be?
You know, honestly, I think we're going to end up meeting here. Because it's very, right now, given the time of year, the venues we've explored, we'd like to have it down there, but the venues that we've explored really are not available right now. They're, they're unheated. The Chong Museum would be great, but they're unheated right now. Forefathers, you know, Bob has looked. Forefathers, you know, Bob has looked into that, you know, he doesn't have the insurance on it. The plumbing isn't working yet. There's no handicap access and there's no heat. Doesn't sound like a good location.
And. Hmm? Green Chol.
Green Chol is still occupied, so that's not available. And Houston's place, uh, we'll check that out. He just doesn't have it on. So, I mean, there's been a lot of ops, the furniture store. So, um, there's been a lot of, talk, talk to him, good friends. So I think we're going to end up being here, but the ninth is on. There'll be food. Lisa's doing some refreshments, so. She does her, does her puffball Christmas tree. You'll want to be there. But they'll have refreshments and the idea is to bounce some ideas. And the EDC will be taking charge of this. You guys want to be there because they're not really used to knowing how to do a design workshop or even discuss this.
Seven o'clock?
Uh, six thirty. It's going to be six thirty. We have, the issue there is we have a lot of, we have an older population in a lot of those homes. And we want to get them there, and actually, Jen Rose is doing a lot to get them there. She asked them to go a little earlier. Said, okay, we can do it.
You know, question, what are they, uh, with that section down there primarily because of, uh, part of Senate Road is in Kennabon Port?
Well, the reason why we're looking at doing this is because we have existing businesses down on Lock Haven Road. It's going to be basically a runtle road from Goff's Mill Brook up to, you know, the border and then Lock Haven. It's going to be just a, a runtle road and Lock Haven. Senate Road is not being contemplated at this particular time.
Excuse me, turn around, block, you got Senate Road right there.
Right.
Where Forefathers is and everything else.
Right, but that, actually, Forefathers is actually on Lock Haven Road there.
I, no, it's not. Well, then the entrance is.
The entrance is on.
But the majority of it is up, up home.
Well, the, the objective is to do it on Lock Haven Road and, and do the same thing that we're doing here. We're going to follow property lines as much as possible. Um, the, the EDC for the, for the same reason. And what they want to do is they want to make it a business, a mixed use business. So that's an extension of North Street out of, out of Kennabon, Kennabon Port. Uh, and to increase, because we have a number of businesses there. They're all non-conforming. They can't expand. The thing that's interesting is the EDC is extremely design oriented. And they, they have standards to make yours look like, uh, you look like Pikers compared to them. So it's going to be really interesting to see. They're going to get some really interesting results. They want to see what people have to say. There may be a lot of, and of course, as you know, the EDC is talking about going all, you know, they're ambitious beyond belief. They want to go, they're looking at going all the way up, not, not to just, I mean, we were talking about down in here somewhere. Uh, probably before Lady Slipper Lane, well, before Lady Slipper Lane. They're looking, they, they're discussing going all the way to Route one. And I said, that is a comp plan change.
Another one.
That's a huge comp plan change.
Getting back to, to your GIS, I think you should put in that area over there by the racetrack. Put it in because it's easier not to delete it when we decide to go that way. But just so we have something to look at, I would say put it in for now.
I put it in for now. I think per your instructions, I'll contact the property. Who's the most critical is frankly the one on the end, because if they don't want to play, the game's over.
Is there no other, you know, way through, I mean, an easement through other property that they won't?
Yeah.
You might add any, you could go anywhere else.
Well, it certainly could go through any of these locations here. I mean, um, we do cut this property here. I mean, this is, uh, this is the solar center. We cut them. But they're, they're currently, their back portion of their land, the reason why we didn't expand out there is because he's a residential district. Let's do what, but he's also in the residential district. That, his back portion, I mean, could he go through to in there?
Yeah.
You can go through the solar side?
Sure.
One of those properties, some of those properties could be sold eventually.
Tell me when, I'm trying to remember the, the lane. Right after the, um, Woodcar, where the big E was. Then you have, this is what I call Strickland's property. You said that ends right there.
Well, this is, this is the.
Correct, where there is a road right there, right after the Strickland property.
This one here.
Where the Woods Working Shop is.
Yeah, it's north of, it's, it's north of Woods Working Shop, right?
Yes.
It's on, it's on the north side, which means it's towards Town Hall.
Yes, there is a road right there.
There's a right of way right out to there.
No, goes back all the way to the river.
Well, the right of way is connected to this parcel on the aerial. Show me where you're talking about. That's the road that exists there and then here's.
No, that's, that's.
This is the one right here.
This one right here. This goes all the way back to that because Mrs. Drew owns all this and through here. Turn it. Because this is where the wood shop is.
Yeah.
And then there's one house there, and then it's where David Bass is, and then, uh.
Well, just so you know, this road may go out there, but this road is only connected to this property right here. This, this right of way is part of this property.
Okay, I'm just saying, I mean, I.
Other than they could make a deal out of here, it's another story. I, I think the point, and it's a good point to make, Walker's Lane may not be the access point.
It would be your worst point.
GIS. Very good, very nice, right point. Well, I still would like, I still want the neighbors to. I, you know, we don't want to say.
Yes, but I'm just saying, what I'm saying is that would be, what are your worst points? Because turnaround for visibility for, or anything else to try to come through there, because it's a blind corner. And you wouldn't be able to get anything through there because you got a runtle metal and that whole curvature there. You can't even see, and you, just for a regular Harvey homeowner to get in out of there, forget a business or anything else.
Well, you know, this is, you know, if, if you can't get the site, this, this is not appropriate. But I'd much rather come out on Wimmer Road into that intersection or the Route one intersection, that controlled intersection, than Walker's Lane, which is a nightmare.
That's what I'm saying. Walker's Lane is a total nightmare.
Okay, frankly, I don't think you could get anything through NDOT there. So we have a call that we can bring this up for the year. Okay. All right, having said that, it's getting kind of late, we'll have to leave building sizes for the next meeting and our planners report. Uh, okay, planners report. Uh, today, um, we did, I had a site walk, public hearing, approved a private way. And it was actually something that we did, but not one that's regulated by you folks. On, uh, over on.
Stretching that out.
On Lock Haven Road. Um, and it went well. The neighbors came out. That's one of the first public appearances I've been to in which the, actually, we get a big turnout. We had about six people at the turnout. Uh, that went very well, um, and they were approved. Uh, it's going to be three lots. It's two, two existing, it's one existing building is going to be happened in a split of the other remaining parcel. Probably going in, it's only going to be about three hundred and eighty feet going in. Uh, let's see what else we've, uh, we also have, still haven't finished yet. We have a number of the private way exception applications that are being worked on right now. Uh, they include, um, Bittersweet, not a surprise. But I also have one on Curtis Road, I believe, now. Curtis Road is, as we have learned.
A challenge.
Quite a challenge. I, I did have some.